Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we have quorum.
I call this meeting of City Council for May 2nd, 2025, to order and acknowledge that we're on Treaty I territory, the home and traditional lands of the Anishnabi, Inunu, and Dakota Peoples, and in the national homeland of the Red River Métis. Our drinking water comes from Sho Lake 40, First Nation, in Treaty III territory. We'll now have the opening prayer. Please rise if you're able. We'll hear from Counselor Duncan.
Gracious and loving God, we gather here today with heavy hearts. Together, as a council and as a community, we mourn the sudden loss of our colleague and friend, Counselor Jason Schreier. We thank you for his life, for his profound commitment to public service, and for the energy, passion, and principle he brought to the city he so deeply loved, Winnipeg. Jason's voice was a steady and thoughtful presence in this chamber. He cared fiercely about people, about principle, and about our shared future. He never shied away from standing up for what he believed was right, and he did so with integrity, conviction, and care. So today in our sorrow, we ask for your comfort. Be near to Jason's family, his loved ones, and those who knew him best. Give strength to those who are grieving, and help us all honor his life by continuing the work he believed in. And as the song reminds us, "When I get where I'm going, there'll be only happy tears. I will shed the sins and struggles I've carried all these years, and I'll leave my heart wide open. I will love and have no fear. When I get where I'm going, don't cry for me down here." We trust Jason is now in that place, free from burden, surrounded by light. And as we return to work here serving Winnipeg, may we do so with the same heart, dedication, and principle that he brought every day. May we carry Jason's memory forward with gratitude and love. Bless this meeting, Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Amen. Ro call, Mr. Clerk.
Madam Speaker, Counselor Sharma, His Worship Mayor Gillingham, Counselors Allard, Rowadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Gilroy, Luke, Mays, Rollins, Santos, and Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge some guests in the gallery today. We appreciate your presence. Former City Counselor Kevin Kline, Deputy Chief of Winnipeg Police, Mr. Art Standard, and he's just stepped out momentarily, Mr. Gord Delbridge, President of QP Local 500. Thank you for being here. It is with deep sadness that I now ask the Clerk to read into the record the condolence motion for our colleague and dear friend, Counselor Jason Schreier, who passed away earlier this week. Mr. Clerk.
Moved by His Worship Mayor Gillingham, seconded by Counselor Sharma, whereas this council is deeply saddened by the passing of our dear friend and colleague, Jason Schreier, Counselor for the Elmwood East Kildonan Ward, and whereas Counselor Schreier has proudly served the citizens of the Elmwood East Kildonan Ward with passion and conviction since his election to City Council in 2014, and whereas Counselor Schreier came from a proud tradition of public service and was a thoughtful and kind, community-oriented leader who consistently demonstrated a deep sensitivity to the struggles of others throughout his career, and whereas Counselor Schreier was focused on issues of food security, construction inflation, and keeping life affordable for Winnipeggers, and whereas Counselor Schreier's contribution to the deliberations and work of this council will be sorely missed. Therefore, be it resolved that council formally convey its deepest condolences to Counselor Schreier's wife, Sarah, two sons, and the entire Schreier family.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Mayor, your remarks and tribute on behalf of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank Counselor Duncan for a beautiful and very appropriate opening prayer today. I know every one of us will get a chance, I believe, Madam Speaker, to put some words on the record about our colleague, Jason Schreier. Just frankly, it's hard to believe we're here today. This life we all signed up for and got elected to serve in, it's an honor to be elected officials and serve the people of our constituencies, our wards, and our city. And frankly, sometimes it can bring out the worst in us, I think. Sometimes it brings out the best in us. One thing about Jason Schreier that I'll always, always know and think of is he was a kind man, no matter what, a kind man. In our biggest debates, he would debate passionately. I'm really glad we worked construction inflation into the motion today. He would debate principally on what he believed in, but no matter what, through it all, he was never not kind. He was never unkind. He could work with any one of us. It was rewarding to see him in action in his ward. The last ward event, I got to be with him in the Elmwood East Kildonan Ward was this February for winter carnival, and he was absolutely in his element with the people he served. Getting hugged, giving hugs, talking to people, entertaining them. He was truly someone who cared about what he did in serving the community. And yes, he, of course, came from a long line in his family of public service and a commitment to doing all he could through elected office to make his community and our city better. I'm grateful for the years that we got elected together in 2014 at the same time, and I'm grateful for the years that he and I were able to serve on council together, and I got to sit with him on various committees, whether it was the Finance Committee or Water Waste and Environment Committee, and now obviously through all those years around this chamber. And to understand from him his priorities and his passions by what he signed up for and prioritized, and it's in the motion today, he really cared about food security for people. The project he was working on right now, as some of you are helping him work on it, is really related to making sure that individuals who are struggling to afford food would have food. He talked often, we know, about the impact of the growing costs on residents, and that's why he raised the matter of construction inflation. He really wanted people to understand there's a reason that the costs of all things are going up here in the delivery of city services, and it's sometimes parts of it are outside of our control as a council. Those are things that matter to him. My wife and I were talking about Jason's life just the other day, and of course, all of us today are deeply saddened for Sarah, and his boys, and his parents, and we offer our deepest condolences to them at this time. But my wife and I were talking about this, and she said, "You know, whenever we saw Jason and Sarah together, they always seemed just so in love, laughing, smiling with one another." And to really get a glimpse into Jason Schreier, you had to spend time with him outside of this chamber, and all of us had a chance to see him or hear him. Some of you more than others. Some of you were singing buddies with him. With all due respect to all of you, I heard his voice, I've heard yours. He was a good singer. I think he carried a lot of you, a lot of us, regularly. But to see him dancing at folklorama or singing in languages I didn't even know he knew, to hear him sing his prayers here for us in an opening prayer, that's what we'll miss. Frankly, it's not the policy, it's not the debates. It's Jason the kind man, the fun man, the man who had so many talents, was interesting, was curious, was passionate. So there's so much, I'm going to leave space for others to say, you know, your own personal experience with him, but I'm thankful to God for Jason Schreier, that we've had time to serve together on this council, that he became a friend, and that he served the people of our city with all the passion and zeal and commitment that was who Jason was.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Counselor Jason Schreier's passing is a tremendous loss, not only to those of us who had the privilege of knowing him personally, but also to the residents of Elmwood East Kildonan, who he served so passionately. We are deeply saddened. You're right, Mr. Mayor. Kindness was Jason's focus, always. I first met Jason in 1999. We were both at the Pan Am Games that Winnipeg was hosting, summer of 1999, and we were specifically at the modern pentathlon, the modern pentathlon site that was at the Maples Community Center. That's the first day I met Jason, and what really captivated me was his joie de vivre. His joie de vivre. I think we all know that about him. He was in his element there. He was enjoying the outdoors, being amongst people, and connecting sincerely in the present moment. Since that summer in 1999, Jason and I remained friends over the years. I recall the time he dressed up as Santa Claus and came to visit my family home at my parents' place. He brought so much joy that day to my young niece. He brought so much joy that day to my young niece and adults alike. There were so many moments like that where he brought joy to others. I want to share these happy memories. It's important. As the mayor said, it's not our job title that defines us. Anyways, a few years later, I'll tell you a story. Jason loved to dance. We all know that. And being at my wedding reception was no different for him. He was so pumped to take his turn with the Jago lantern on his head. He took over the dance floor. He was the center of attention. No one was looking at the bride. There were all eyes on Jason. It was a time of my life, and he sure had fun that night. I see it now. Bhangra music at full blast. Dancer extraordinaire right there in the middle of the dance floor. Again, having fun in the present moment. So many great moments of friendship, and I know there's many other special moments around this council chamber. I've heard them, I've seen them with all of you, and we were proud to call Jason a friend. Years later, we served here together on City Council, where we've all witnessed Jason's passion and authenticity with colleagues in the public. He had many files he was leading on to make Winnipeg a better place, always advocating with his whole heart. He cared deeply about people, about doing what was right, about giving a voice to those who often go unheard, and about making a difference in the lives of the residents he represented in Elmwood East Kildonan. We saw the best of Counselor Schreier as a very caring and compassionate person, one that has left a very special mark. We are so lucky to have crossed paths with him. Condolences to all who knew and loved Jason, and our hearts are with the entire Schreier family. Counselor Edie, I'd like to now call upon you for your remarks.
Madam Speaker, Mayor, colleagues. I lost a... There's no longer the Counselor Brothers. We lost a wonderful man who cared passionately about people, as we've heard. And I just, my heart actually is so sad for Sarah and Jared, his other son, for Ed and Lily, and all this family, because Jason was like a very, very important person for that family. And that family is huge. The cousins are all over, and I'm just so sad for them. I'm sad for myself. I'm going to talk just some recent about who the man is, Madam Speaker, or who the man was, at least from how I knew him in most recent times. Madam Speaker, when I was diagnosed with cancer, my colleagues were around me, but Jason was there every day, every day, making sure I was okay. And that's kind of how our relations are. I always check in on him, too. And you know, elections can be tough, because, well, he was a politician. He was a reluctant politician, actually, because he was doing a lot of stuff passionately for people all the time. That's just who Jason Schreier was. And in that difficult election, when actually people were campaigning against us, saying, "We're not doing nothing about vacant derelict housing. It's our fault. You haven't done nothing." Jason was being blamed for not doing anything about crime. But what the people just don't know is the time that we spent on my front stairs, the season's just starting. We only had a chance for one this year yet. And we'd give each other hugs and tell each other things are going to work out. Anyway, but the people just don't understand. To run for office means, yes, people have expectations, and we try to do what we can so that people don't have to live a tough life, so that people don't have to get into crime to fund whatever their needs are, and those kind of issues. And every day in that campaign, every day at nighttime, there was Jason Schreier, my yodeler. That's what he called himself, Ross Edie's yodeler. And I actually had to ask him, "In council chambers, you and my colleagues, no." He'd often quote Ross Edie. I said, "Well, Jason, what about you? You have a good understanding of the issues." He was very principled, like I am. And yeah, I just said, "You know, you have to be yourself. Don't keep referring to me." But I loved that he did do it. And anyway, every night, I was leaving my campaign office, because I had to run my own campaign, try to knock on doors, and try to take the heat for everybody, everything that's going wrong in the North End. It's Ross Edie's fault. And I was feeling really down. And he'd be there every night, Madam Speaker, every night. Because that's the kind of guy he was. If he seen somebody struggling, he'd be there. If he seen somebody struggling on the street, he'd be there trying to help. I can't tell you, we're karaokeing at Boogie's after council on a Thursday, and there's a woman who's having a real hard time. And just the kindness and the caring and the respect to try to make sure that we could help her. We gave her a ride home, and you know, like, and you know, around the table, I can't tell you how many times, construction inflation, we discussed that on the stoop many, many times. And that was, he grabbed that issue, and we had some solutions that, you know, politically, some of those solutions aren't workable with 16 of us here voting. But just on council, well, you've all expressed that he's such a great man. And it was stress relief, he and I. He and I, over the last couple of years, we karaokeed all over the city, everywhere, everywhere. Because you know what that was for him? Music was his passion. But not only is he a singer, as Madam Speaker has mentioned, to watch Counselor Jason Schreier, while Jason Schreier, sing is to watch him do song and dance. Song and dance, always moving, always. He always had to move, move, move. And you know, that's how we sing together with the Counselor Brothers. We moved together. And I can't tell you how many times we were at different events where just he and I were dancing. Actually, in Calgary, here, I said, "Come on, you have to dance." We were singing to Abba's... Yes, the Dancing Queen. And he was a little reluctant to get up with her, but I said, "Come on, Jason." So we were dancing. We were having a great time. And you know, he enjoyed life. He enjoyed life immensely. He enjoyed his family. Sarah and Jared, I've gotten to know you so much. Anyway, I don't know what more to say, but I'm going to end with something here. And I want my colleagues, when I say the words "say something," I want you to say out "Jason Schreier." I want you to do that, okay? It's part of Jason Schreier's go-to song that he enjoyed so much because the people enjoyed when he sang it, because he'd be out there in the crowd singing and moving. And so I'm just going to end with... I'm not going to sing it. Don't worry about the voices. I can't. Anyway. Could you be, could you be, could you be loved? Yeah, could you be, could you be, could you be loved? Could you be, could you be, could you be loved? Yeah, and be loved. Could you be loved and be loved? And then the song goes, "Say something, Jason Schreier. Say something." Say something. Jason Schreier. We love you, and all the people of Winnipeg love you!
Thank you, Counselor Edie. It's your best friend. Thank you. Counselor Rollins.
Just yesterday morning, they let me know you were gone. Suzanne, the plans they made put an end to you. Walked out this morning, and I wrote down this song. Just can't remember who to send it to. I've seen fire, and I've seen rain. I've seen sunny days that I thought would never end. I've seen lonely times when I could not find a friend, but I always thought that I'd see you again. Won't you look down upon me, Jesus? You gotta help me make a stand. You just got to see me through another day. My body's aching, and my time is at hand. And I won't make it any other way. Oh, I've seen fire, and I've seen rain. I've seen sunny days that I thought would never end. I've seen lonely times when I could not find a friend, but I always thought that I'd see you again. Been walking my mind through an easy time, back turned towards the sun. Lord knows, when the cold wind blows, it'll turn your head around. Well, there's always the time on the telephone line to talk about things to come. Sweet dreams and fine machines and pieces on the ground. Oh, I've seen fire, and I've seen rain. I've seen sunny days that I thought would never end. I've seen lonely times when I could not find a friend, but I always thought that I'd see you. I always thought that I'd see you. I always thought that I'd see you again.
Thank you, Counselor Rollins. So heartfelt. Thank you. Counselor Chambers.
There are no words that can express the depth of loss that we feel here as a council. So appropriate that you sang that song, because that's what Jason represented, the song. You know, I've heard, you know, a few other people speak. Counselor Edie was bang-on when he talked about how Jason wants to help people. And during my time here and seeing Jason work, that's truly what it was. Folklorama, when he would dance bhangra, it's his attempt to connect with people. When he was doing the limbo dance at the Acam Hall, it was his attempt to connect with people. His passion for learning and understanding different languages is his attempt at connecting with people. Jason will certainly be missed. I think about his wife and his children. I think about his mother and father, and yes, the greatest fear of a parent is to bury their child. So my heart grieves for Ed and Lily. There's all a message that we can take away from the passing of Counselor Schreier. Though we are in elected positions, we still have lives. We still have families. We still have friends. We still have issues in our lives that we go through. So I'm asking each and every one of you, Mayor Gillingham had asked it as well, let's check in with one another. Let's make sure that we're all doing okay, especially in these times. It's important. It's what we need to do. Jason, thank you for your service. You will be missed.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers. Counselor Luke.
I posted this on my Facebook page after the absolutely beautiful bonfire time we had at Counselor Wyatt's. Thanks for the joy that you've given me, Jason. Today was a really hard day. Devastating news that our colleague Jason Schreier passed away yesterday. Unexpectedly gone. The earthly journey is over. Losing a work colleague is a different kind of experience. You're not family. You don't know them too personally, yet you still have a deep connection through work. I'd say Jason and I were on different ends of the political spectrum. A bit of an understatement. I think Gord understands that. But we came together on so many issues. And that's the odd but incredible part of being a city counselor, in working to build a city and improve the quality of life for everyone, you must come together on many issues. You must come together on many issues. Jason was so, so kind. Always happy and positive, respectful, multilingual, worldly and well-travelled, and he had such an inquisitive mind. The role of a city councillor is one where you work hard. You make decisions that impact people's lives. You aim to move mountains and slay dragons along the way. You create the most unusual alliances one day and different alliances the next day, depending on the issue. The most incredible times I shared with Jason were the playhard part of the job. At Christmas parties, at conferences, at sing-alongs, at folkarama. He had a deep, deep passion for life. He lived every day to the fullest. My heart breaks for his wife Sarah and his children. When there is such a deep passion and love, the loss is profound. I know what it's like to lose a dad and a brother. Everything changes, and absolutely nothing is ever the same again. Jason, your soul is free, you can drift away, you can rest in peace. It's an incredible honor and joy to have known you. And I posted a beautiful, a beautiful song that he was singing when we were at the retreat out at, um... Elkhorn. Anyways, it's a beautiful little video.
Rest in peace, Jason. Thank you, Counsel Luke's. Counsel Mays?
Thank you. You get these jobs and it's, you're on your own really at City Hall. There's no team, there's no party there to back you up, and you, you get to know people and you... I wish I'd known that modern pentathlon story. I was there, I was in the crowd that day. That would have been a great thing to know, that you and Jason had been there too.
Were you running around the track?
Nor was I thrown off the horse by that one competitor. Uh, but no. But you do get to know people here and there, and you get to know a bit about their background. And we all got to know Jason, and you discover that, you know, you were in Ottawa at the same time, or he'd had his Australian phase of his life. So you certainly, you know, he'd done many things. He worked on the oil rigs and stuff. You'd suddenly, you'd be telling some story and you'd think, "You did that? Tell me about that." So a varied career, a lot of different things. You know, just a fascinating character in many ways. And the music, you know, we were in here one time, our committee, and he was saying something, "Maybe Brian Mays", and then he stopped himself, and then he broke into, "Maybe I'm amazed", to Paul McCartney, saying, "Maybe Brian Mays", and we both enjoyed the moment, immensely, I have to say, and we both, because it was so clever. It was, uh, so just a great mind, sort of flexible, he could think of these different sorts of things. And the guy loved reach for the top like I did, and would always play, would always show up. So we'll do something with Miles Mack, because I've been with him at Miles Mack a couple times, and he's told the story of how he decided to run for council one day when he was at Miles Mack. So I think that'd be appropriate. I don't have any particular question to answer, but I was struck at the last council meeting. There was talk of how Abraham Lincoln, the Gettysburg Address by Abraham Lincoln was famously short, but he gets up and says, "Yeah, but the Lincoln-Douglas debates were famously long." And I was thinking, "You've got to be pretty sharp to come up with that, on your feet. The Lincoln-Douglas debates, that's a pretty good reach-the-top type of knowledge." Unfortunately, I never, you always think you'll have time to tell people that, you know, say, "That was, you got off a good line there", but problem with life, of course, you never know when these things are going to run out. So there are many things I'd like to have said with him, and I'm sure we all would have. But he was, he was a very kind man, as the mayor said, a very decent colleague, with a great sense of humor and a lot of knowledge about a lot of different things. Like Counsel Luke's, I remember that, you know. I always think of one of my sisters when I hear that Dobby Gray song, "Drift Away", but I think I shall think also now Counsel Schreier, who's drifted away from us. But we'll remember him, and he was, uh, he was, he was, he was... Well, we all come here as individuals, and often there is no team. I think we would all appreciate the joy Jason brought to council and to life. So as you said, Madam Speaker, je vois de vivre that you really can't deny. So we will miss you, Jason.
Thank you, Counsel Mays. Any other speakers? Counsel Kilroy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I talk about Jason, about my own experiences, I just would like to send a message on behalf of the Canadian capital cities. They wanted to extend a heartfelt condolences on the passing of Counsel Schreier. Jason was a passionate public service and a dedicated representative of Winnipeg. We had the privilege of getting to know him through his work on behalf of the Canadian capital cities, where he always brought enthusiasm, thoughtful insight, and unique perspectives. One shaped by his remarkable upbringing at the Governor General's residence and his deep roots in political life. As a son of former Manitoba Premier Ed Schreier, Jason carried forward a proud legacy of public service. He did so with sincerity and genuine desire to make a difference. Whether at the Manitoba Legislature or the Winnipeg City Council, he had a special ability to connect with people, and we were always struck by his eagerness to engage, to listen, and to share. We send our deepest sympathies to City Council, the dedicated staff he worked alongside with, his constituents, and most of all, Jason's close family and friends. We will, he will be remembered not just for his service, but for his spirit. May he rest in peace. So what I want to share with you about Jason, that I've gotten to know Jason just a little bit better kind of this term. He asked me to kind of meet with him on a few, on a few issues, so I was able to meet with him. And I got to know some of the, some of his constituents. So I know that he was a deeply rooted constituent person. Some of us are kind of policy-driven, some of us constituent-driven. He was very driven by his constituency, where he brought forward things like, like food security was a big one. So he brought forward the Food Club, where people go and they, you know, for a little, I was able to go and see it. So it's kind of amazing how much food people were able to get for a little bit of money. He also got a bus program, so seniors would be able to get access to the grocery store. And I know he was working with his community organization to make sure that they, they had a space. And I know that he was working on that. On the corner, on the corner of Henderson, he is doing a community connection space that is going to be awesome. And I think, I think his, at one time, he was hoping to perform there. So I know that they're looking at, hopefully, trying to somehow honorate him in his work in his community. And so one thing I think that Jason has provided me is really an understanding is that, you know, people aren't going to remember the stuff that I did on council when I left. I mean, me and Jason, we weren't the closest. There's other people that were really close to Jason that are sitting here. But I can tell he left a memorable impression on all of us. And so how somebody makes you feel when they leave this world is something that I think he's taught me. And it made me reflect on my, my own life and how I am treating people and how I want to be remembered. So I want to thank Jason for that, because it's a lesson I'm learning right here and now. And he has left a, you can tell anybody that has, you talk to, he's left an impression, and I'll always remember the word "construction inflation", and I will thank him. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kilroy. I'd like to close today with Counsel Wyatt, but is there anyone else first? Counsel Santos.
Definitely going to miss my karaoke band mate, Counsel Brother Jason Schreier. I'll never forget the first time I heard Jason sing. I think it was at the Counsel ESPAP retreat, and I was blown away, just amazed at his talent. He was enigmatic, full of passion, and deeply committed to the issues like inflation and food insecurity. What I'm going to miss the most is him sitting beside me. We joke about how long the meetings would take. Chat about exercising, eating healthy. And, you know, I'd always tease him about the length of his speeches. "What about ours today?" And, you know, he'd just smile and say, "You all guys inspire me to speak", because every issue mattered. And you're right, Jason, every issue matters. One of my fondest memories was at FCM last year in Calgary. Jason, Counsel Eady and I, we spent most of our time together getting to know each other and found ourselves at a karaoke bar. And I love karaoke personally, I sing at home. But I was encouraged by Jason and Ross to take the mic and do it in a bunch of, in front of strangers. So it was nerve-wracking, but it was an experience of a lifetime. And from there, we had our little band, Sister Santos and Counsel Brothers. Sister Santos and Counsel Brothers. So Jason, may you forever sing from the heavens above. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. I once was lost, but now I'm found. Was blind, but now I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Santos. Next speaker, Counsel Allard.
Okay. Jason, I'm going to join the fray with much trepidation. First off, I was, I heard about Jason's passing when Debbie called. And I was, I was pretty shaken. Jason's got a, he's got a son, he's my daughter's age, goes to my daughter's school. I know him. So I'm thinking of him. I hope he's okay. I know he's not okay, because he lost his dad. So anyway, Justin, Jason and I sang this song together at a retreat, so I'm going to give it a, I'm going to give it a go. And tribute to the polyglot Jason Schreier. And I guess pop culture with Enrique Iglesias, "Eroé", so if you want to follow. It is, it is not word for word, the Spanish versions tend to be racier, but the substance of it is there, so. Give me a moment to load this thing. We talked about doing this in public for so long, and finally we did it at a council thing. Hosted by Counsel Rowlands. Okay, here we go. My apologies, I don't have the paid version. So he was a tenor with a big vocal range. He did the harmonies. I did the melodies, because I don't know. All right. Si una vez yo podía llegar a arisar tu frío, tu piel a quemar que se yo tu boca y morirme ahí después y si entonces temblaras por mí y llorarás al verme sufrir al sinuda tu vida enterrada como yo la doy por ti. Si pudiera ser tu héroe si pudiera ser tu Dios que salvarte a ti mil veces puede ser mi salvación. Si supieras la locura que llevo que me hiere y mata por dentro qué más da mirar acá al final lo que importa es te quiero. Si pudiera ser tu héroe si pudiera ser tu Dios que salvarte a ti mil veces puede ser mi salvación. He told me, "Don't worry about it, just have fun." Déjame tocarte, quiero acariciarte mirar acá al final lo que importa... I think I'm off. I am off. Si pudiera ser tu héroe si pudiera ser tu Dios que salvarte a ti mil veces puede ser mi salvación. Quiero ser tu héroe si pudiera ser tu Dios porque salvarte a ti mil veces puede ser mi salvación. Puede ser mi salvación. Quiero ser tu héroe. Anyway, I think you wouldn't want me to do that. I'd also like to, I'd also like to make a tribute in French. I understand the interpreter's here. Alors, Jason, je viens de chanter "Eroé", comme on l'a fait devant le conseil municipal, comme on en a parlé pendant des mois, peut-être plus qu'un an. J'aurais voulu que tu puisses l'entendre. Alors, j'aimerais reconnaître Jason, la personne et Jason l'homme politique. Jason était très intéressé, était champion des causes francophones à Winnipeg. Tout récemment, le conseil l'a nommé représentant de la NBM, alors de l'association des municipalités bilingues du Manitoba. Il a aussi appuié une proposition pour étendre les services français à travers la ville de Winnipeg, où maintenant, la province nous demande seulement de l'offrir dans les districts réels, Saint-Bonifat, Saint-Vital, Saint-Horbert. Alors, il a appuié cette proposition, et merci au conseil. Vous l'avez passé cette proposition ou quand possible, quand viable, qu'on devrait faire cela. On l'a déjà mentionné, Jason était champion pour l'abordabilité. Il était très préoccupé que les ménages avaient de plus en plus de, c'était de plus en plus difficile pour payer son loyer, pour payer son hypothèque, pour acheter des épiceries, puis que le coût de vie continuait à augmenter. Je pense qu'il a été un excellent représentant du comté. J'ai entendu une histoire, Rossi était là. Ross, you were there, it was a Bike Winnipeg event, and I think Jason was driving the bike, because he was a passenger. Better done that way, probably. Alors, durant cette randonnée de Bike Winnipeg, je crois comprendre que Jason était... on le reconnaissait, on l'arrêtait dans la rue, et puis qu'il allait au... il était chef de file, alors il était le premier des personnes en bicyclette. Mais ensuite quelqu'un le voyait, puis il arrêtait pour leur parler, évidemment, parce que c'est Jason. Et puis, il voulait parler aux résidents. Alors, il parlait aux résidents, puis c'était un peu parfait parce que des fois, c'est difficile de savoir quand la conversation est terminée. Je pourrais même dire même, peut-être, surtout avec Jason lui-même, peut-être, mais en général, puis ce qui se passait, c'est qu'à la fin de la lignée, Jason disait, mais il disait que je dois aller. Mon convoy de bicyclette continuait, alors ça continuait comme ça. Mais le cycle se répétait, et Jason parlait à plusieurs résidents quand il faisait ses tournées en bicyclette. Alors, c'est une des choses qui se passait dans son comté. Je sais aussi qu'il livrait des graines pour des semences, pour que les gens puissent faire croître la nourriture à la maison. Mais finalement, Jason l'homme, on l'a déjà dit, mais c'est un homme... c'était un bon homme, c'était un homme sans... quelqu'un l'a dit, je ne connais pas le mot, peut-être le traducteur peut le trouver, mais... He was a man with no guile. Il n'avait pas de machination, il n'avait pas de calcul. C'était lui qui te disait ce qu'il pensait. Et puis, c'était pas un calcul, c'était pas un jeu, c'était la vie. Il te disait ce qu'était la vérité après lui. Il était toujours content de changer son opinion si les faits disaient que... devraient la changer. Alors, il était un homme de science finalement, qui, pour lui, la vérité était plus dite importante que si on avait dit quelque chose ou non, puis ça pouvait impacter notre réputation politique. En tout cas, c'était un bon homme qu'on a perdu. Puis, je pense vraiment à sa famille, puis comment dit-il que ça doit être sans leur papa, puis si soudainement de l'avoir perdu. So with that, merci Jason, gracias Jason. Si van imaki.
Thank you councillor Alard. I want to once again thank former councillor Klein for being here. You two, I know, had a special bond with councillor Schreier, I saw that for many years, thank you. Our final speaker today is councillor Wyatt.
Fully mackerel, councillor Rollins, why aren't you singing karaoke with us? That was amazing. And you too councillor Santos, when I saw, I heard you at the fire. Hidden talents, but nothing personal councillor Alard, you might want to stick to the shower. Sing in the shower, start there, we'll get you going.
Jason, talk, Jason made me do it.
I mean, wow. I mean, my first memory of Schreier was here in this chamber, I think one of the first memories was, he's sitting, it was the beginning of the meeting, it's turn to do the prayer, and he's humming away, and he's going, "What the hell are you doing, Schreier?" He says, "Well, I'm getting ready to sing the prayer." I said, "I know, but what language?" He said, "He sang the prayer in Swahili, and it's Swahili prayer." I'll never forget it. And we had then councillor Morantz, who was sitting about right over there where councillor Edie's, and I was looking, and Morantz was starting to kind of laugh, but not laugh with him, but laugh at him, having known Schreier for so long, it kind of irked me. So I was thinking about, what do I do about this? And so, my turn, you know, how we move on the prayer, my turn was next for the next month. So I started singing, you know, "Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me" is my prayer. Of course, Schreier is singing, and then Morantz starts singing, you know? It was like, so, you know, I'm going to read, because if I don't read, I'm going to cry, and I was taught in my generation, there been no crying probably. Jason and I met about thirty-five years ago. We met through the party and became friends and remained friends ever since. I think we both had hair back then. He was a good man, a family man, a wonderful man, Jared, with a wonderful son Jared and wife Sarah. Jason never saw himself as special, and never, never took the attitude of entitlement, which he could have easily had done so, being the son of a former premier governor general growing up in Rita Hall and attending school with the kids of the Ottawa elite. No, he was a very humble guy, always questioned. He questioned and pushed those in power to do better, but he also questioned and challenged himself, and he assumed nothing. At a young age, a working age, he could have gotten a job in government, anything he wanted in that sense. But that wasn't Jason. Instead, he went and worked in the oil rigs in Alberta, as been mentioned. He also worked for Avalon Construction, so those of you old enough to remember, ABA, Halloween, Avalon. You know, I mean, that was hard work, that's digging beside basements to repair basement foundations. And he would laugh that he was in better shape back then. Later, he became a professional entertainer singing and dancing. Jason was a free spirit. The last memory I've had of him was, one of the last memories is Jason and Ross and myself at Karaoke Club 200. We would do songs together, Ross and I were clearly amateurs, but Jason would never let us think that. He was a great guy who loved his family, cared about the community. He lived, that he lived in and represented the city as a whole. Thank you for raising recently about the project that he's working on. That would be a great project for us to, at the corner of Henderson and Johnson. He told me, and councillor Wyatt, he wanted to, you know, do kind of like the Transcendental Square, their gathering spot in the heart of Old Elmwood. It would be a great project for us to follow up with, in his memory. He disliked power politics. He believed and had a vision of that, similar to that, basically Tommy Douglas, that we could build a new Jerusalem in this green and pleasant land called Canada, if we could only learn to share the wealth of the land. Jason was a committed democratic socialist, but unlike many others, he practiced what he preached. He always had time for little guy, as Ross was saying, the working folks, and he preferred their company. He didn't trust the powerful in the city and constantly pushed them to be accountable. He was at times a thorn in their side, and was the example, as was the example last council meeting, when the mayor and chairman Evan Duncan tried to sign councillor Schreier many times during that meeting. And I had to confess to the mayor, when he came to the bonfire the other day, that that was a long meeting, as you recall, and, you know, I might have had a little bit... I, you know, it was late, everybody I could see him. Schreier, Edie Schreier, myself, we got our second wind after dinner. Everybody else, some folks are morning people, you know, and some people are night people. Schreier and I, Edie and I are night people, you know? So I turned to Schreier and I said, you know, "I think this has a construction inflation angle to this issue." And he said, "I think you're right." And boom, he was up and at it, of course. And so, I had to confess, but, you know, he was passionate. He knew that issue inside out, and he was, I mean, he's right. And it's an issue that in terms of economic democracy is something that can't go away. I'm going to really miss him. He was a fantastic work colleague, but more importantly, my friend, a longtime friend, as Ross was saying as well. But I know we'll meet again. I would just like to say, you know, a quote from a passage of the Gospel from JC. Truly, I tell, because it reminds me of Jason. Truly, I tell you, unless you are a child, unless you change and become a child, you shall never enter my father's kingdom in heaven. What does that mean? It means not to be childish, but to be childlike. Jason was a free spirit, you know? He took the job very seriously, but at the same time, he also was, you know, as the mayor was saying, kind, humble, you know? Played good in the sandbox, what it's people were kids. And that was, you know, that was Jason, right? He was never, he never had the airs of office, you know? I was talking to somebody last night, you wouldn't think he was a politician in many ways, right? He was just an average guy in that sense. I'm going to miss him stealing my smokes, though he always said he never smoked. And I...
He was giving them to Edie.
I'm going to miss our little chats here and everywhere. I'm going to miss him seconding my motions. I'm going to miss him...
The mayor will.
I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss him. One of the things that really blew my mind was when he arrived on council, how he'd bring his family all the time to meetings and everything. I was just, he did that all the time with Sarah and Jared. And, you know, at one point, I thought Sarah was actually going to start voting with us, like, committee, committee. And so, it was, I mean, it was great. I mean, it was, it showed how important it was to him. I mean, I miss his passion. He had an inner compass that he knew, he knew the directions, it was always... True north to him was always there. My condolences to Sarah and Jared, Lily and Ed, to the entire family. I was in total shock when I heard the call from the mayor, I was crushed by the news. Can only imagine how hard it is for them. So I ask it, all Winnipegers at this time, to pray for the family, that they may be comforted at this time, and that Jason's life will be remembered with joy, not with sadness, so that his spirit may soar. As Jason always, always had a smile, a laugh, and another song to sing. Goodbye, my friend, until we meet again. Love you.
Thank you councillor Wyatt. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence for our friend councillor Jason Schreier. There's a call for a ten-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you. Good morning, I'm reconvening our council meeting of May 2nd, 2025. I'd like to introduce our pages for today. Michael Mashinter from Tech Vok Vocational High School, who resides in the Point Douglas Ward, and Dalton Akimo from Southeast Collegiate, who resides in the Waverly West Ward. Welcome, thank you for serving council. We'll now move into morning announcements. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, madam speaker. I want to first of all, thank all my colleagues for their beautiful tributes. I couldn't help but think that so far, this has been the most Jason Schreier-esque council meeting ever. No speaking time limits, and everybody's singing, so it's... He would love this day, I think, he really is loving this day.
He gave the extension to everyone, remember that.
Exactly.
Words matter.
Yeah. I do also, and again in a somber note, and I think our colleague councillor Santos is going to speak to this in a moment as well, want to begin by acknowledging the heartbreak and the pain that all of us have felt related to Saturday's terrible attack in Vancouver. I reached out to Mayor Ken Sim and Vancouver City councillor Rebecca Bly, who's also our FCM president, to offer our deepest condolences on behalf of the city council and the people of Winnipeg, who too are grieving for all those who've been killed, injured, and traumatized, for their families and for their friends. We know that the ties between Winnipeg's Filipino community, or Manitoba's Filipino community and the Filipino community and BC's Filipino community, there's strong ties and many ties there. So our love and prayers continue to be with them at this just horrific time. Congratulations to Prime Minister Mark Carney and the Liberal Party on their election win on Monday. And I think all of us look forward to working with the prime minister, his cabinet, and the local members of parliament as well, who we congratulate today. For those returning to office, for those elected for the first time, congratulations to them. To the members of parliament who were not re-elected in Winnipeg. Thank you to each one of them for their service to our community. We'll continue to prioritize with the new government, the funding of the North End Water Pollution Control Centre, building more housing under the Housing Accelerator Fund, and making our communities safer for everyone. And finally, on behalf of all of us, we'd like to wish our Winnipeg Jets all the best as they head to St. Louis tonight. Thank you.
Go Jets, go!
Go Jets, go!
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is councillor Mays.
Thank you, madam speaker. Councillor Schreier would have wanted me to note a couple, that the, as would councillor Orliko and I think councillor Rollins, the Reach for the Top Provincial Championship was played in late April, and Kelvin defeated Sisler, trying to win for the first time since 1972. Unfortunately for them, fell one game short, and Kelvin, who have become quite a dynasty, winning off and on, will have to salute Mr. Martinis, the longtime coach there in some fashion. But two comments from the small quirky Reach for the Top community. I've gotten a couple of emails about councillor Schreier, sorry. One was from one of the Miles Mack folks who said, "From the times I interacted with him over the Reach table and for representing my ward, he acquitted himself well with a dignity not often seen in the modern era." I think Jason would have liked to have been referred to as dignified. And just two weeks ago, we played at St. Paul's, April 14th. So, got a nice email from the coach there saying that, "The thing we appreciated so much about your visit to our school was the energy, enthusiasm, easy sense of humor, and good cheer you all brought with you. Councillor Schreier in particular was the most fun to play with and against." So I don't know how councillor Rollins and I feel about that, but I think he would have loved that as well. So just wanted to note that, and we'll do something with Miles Mack Reach in honor of councillor Schreier in due course. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mays. Councillor Santos, our final speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those kind comments. My heart is heavy following the tragic incident in Vancouver that claimed the lives of eleven members of our community. So on Tuesday, together with Speaker Sharma, we attended the vigil at PCCM, where the Winnipeg Filipino community and friends gather to honor the victims and offer their prayers, love, and support. To the families grieving in Vancouver and all those here in Winnipeg who knew and loved the victims, our family specifically is deeply impacted. My cousin and nephew knew one of the family members that was killed. So, Tupa Bet, please accept my deepest and most heartfelt condolences. The Filipino community is so deeply connected across Canada that even when one member is lost, we feel it all. This tragedy has rippled through our hearts, reminding us the fragility of life and the power of unity. In times like this, we must hold each other close and continue to build safe and welcoming spaces, especially during our cherished festivals and celebrations here in Winnipeg. So let us carry the memory of those we lost by coming together in love, in vigilance, and in community. May their souls rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Santos. Councillor Bowaty, will you move at the minutes of the meeting held on March 27th, 2025? Be taken as read and confirmed?
So moved.
All in favor? Contrary, that's carried. We do have delegations here today. I'd like to call up Dominique Lloyd, Executive Director of the Winnipeg Arts Council, joining us in person here to speak in support of item one of the report of the Executive Policy Committee dated April 22nd, 2025. The City of Winnipeg Proposed Public Art Program, percent for art program. Thank you. Do you have someone else presenting with you as well?
I just have my colleague Tamara Ray, who is our public art manager, just in case she's needed.
Okay, thank you. And Dominique, thank you for your cooperation. We did reschedule council, and we appreciate your understanding.
Absolutely, and it couldn't be any other way, madam speaker. And I would like to just add my voice to everybody here this morning and acknowledge councillor Schreier. It's evident from hearing all of you speak this morning, his affinity for music and dance brought joy to so many, and we got to know him a little bit when councillor Schreier was on the board of the Winnipeg Arts Council back in 2017 and 2018. So we definitely feel the loss, and it was really uplifting to hear you all speak this morning. So thank you from me for that. But on behalf of Winnipeg Arts Council, you know, my sincerest condolences, both to councillor Schreier's loved ones and to all of his council and city of Winnipeg colleagues here.
Thank you, very kind of you.
I promise I won't take too much of your time, I can tell that you have a busy day in front of you. So thank you for taking the time to listen to me this morning. And thank you as well for the motion in the 2024 budget vote last year, and to the efforts of the city of Winnipeg staff to move forward a plan for public art in our city. We really do appreciate the multitude of priorities that you have to balance as councillors, and I know it's no easy task, so we're very grateful to be part of that. And I'm here essentially then for two reasons, one of which is to support the administration report, and to say that when council does get to its strategic priorities, action planning, that we want to be a part of that, we want to be able to be part of your strategic planning and to be able to offer you the best advice that we can to help you make an informed decision. We're an arms-length agency of the city, so please avail yourselves of our knowledge. The other reason is a little bit... The other reason is a little bit more of a pressing need, and that's sort of what happens in the interim between now and 2028, as noted in the, in the report. And essentially by that, I'm talking about the Winnipeg Arts Council's ability to manage current projects that are underway, as well as to sort of plan and be ready for 2028, and to sort of handle the ongoing maintenance and administration of the existing public art collection. It's something that we can manage in the short term, but it's not sustainable in the long term. A Percent for Art strategy allows the city to be strategic about public art and how it fits into the built environment. We used to be able to work with the city to create a vision. There was a four-year public art plan that was reviewed annually. It was developed by WAC staff in collaboration with city departments, department heads, PP&amp;D, Public Works. There were many, many voices that went into that, and that plan created projects all over the city. Since 2024, that process has been left in limbo. So right now, we're surviving on ad hoc projects. And I don't by any means, I mean to suggest that those are not good projects. There's, there really are some, some great ones happening. But, but without a process, there's no way to plan, and there's no way to do things strategically. Right now, we have projects on the go in various stages. Odeon Park in front of the, in front of the Walker Theatre, we'll see an installation created later this year. We're working on some management agreements for longer-term projects with the St. James Civic Centre and the South Winnipeg Rec Complex. And, you know, just like the rest of the collection, those are going to be great projects. They're going to be great additions to their communities. They're going to really reflect the people who live in those neighborhoods and, and present Winnipeg in its light. But they take a long time to do. And public art really is a multi-year process. So just to give you an example, the South Winnipeg Rec Complex is scheduled for, for completion in 2028. So in order to do the work, Counselor Rollins is crossing your fingers, and we definitely hope that it happens. But we, we need to be doing the work in the interim to do that, you know, just to make sure that what ends up happening there is going to be workable, is going to be manageable, is going to be on time and under budget. And somebody has to be doing that work in the interim. And that's the same with any large project. You know, we, we, we don't expect any other aspect of a capital project to be done without time and expertise. So certainly, public art is part of that capital project, and we'd like to be able to see that move forward. And I think that's what can happen with Percent for Art. It also allows us to do things that are not just large projects, whether it's like working with biz zones or working on community-based projects all over the city. We run a full slate of tours that bring people downtown. And downtown is, is a really interesting one, because Nouvelle Blanche is such a key part of public art in the downtown. And I don't know if, if you know this, but part of the reason, and I, I'm going to pat the Winnipeg Arts Council on its back here, part of the reason why Nouvelle Blanche has become successful and attracts 25,000 people downtown in a day is because of a very conscious decision that we made about a decade ago to put public art at the forefront of that. So when you come downtown on Nouvelle Blanche, and you see the dancing trees in Old Market Square, you see the musical seesaws, and you see all those people interacting, that's the direct result of Winnipeg's public art program, making sure that those installations are there, that they're managed, they're sourced properly, that, that public art remains at the forefront of what Nouvelle Blanche is. And when those people come downtown, they come downtown because they know they're going to be able to see and engage with that. And when that public art is not there, it's kind of noticeable. I'm just, I'm just about done here. I just want to let you know, there's about 50 permanently installed pieces in Winnipeg's public art collection around the city, all over the city. And, you know, when they get tagged and vandalized, it's the public art manager that gets called. Even when it's not bad things, sometimes, sometimes lights just burn out. Sometimes controllers need to be replaced. And that's the public art manager who gets those calls. And she has a fantastic relationship with the city, and the city administration, the staff are great. It's a really wonderful working relationship, partnership, but it still comes down to WAC having the resources to deal with those calls. So all of that is work that's not going to go away. It's not going to stop being needed between now and what I hope will be the implementation of a Percent for Art strategy. So we, we'd like to look for ways to make that happen in the interim. The administration report recommended that Percent for Art be ready to go by 2028, and I think that your ESPAT process can do the same. And again, I, I, we want to be there to help you with that. We want to be a resource for you, and we're asking that the Winnipeg Arts Council can be resourced to do the things that it needs to do that. And I think what I would finish by saying is, when you do get to that point, I hope you'll remember that public art really has been a priority for the city. It's been a priority for the city for 20 years pretty much, but it also is, is, it's part of our Winnipeg. It's, it's a priority and center plan. It's even in the 2023 Strategic Priorities Action Plan. And of course, it was in the, in the budget vote that you folks made here last year that we were very grateful for, and which has brought us to this point today. So really, with that, I will just thank you and express again my support for the public art, Percent for Art strategy, and wish you well with the rest of your day.
Thank you for the presentation. We do have questions. Counselor Wyatt?
Thank you for your presentation. Public art, the Winnipeg Arts Council does a wonderful job with the budget that you have. One of the challenges, though, that I see that you have is making the Arts Council more real to the community at large. And when I say the community at large, I think art is something that is, that is not just something, you know, that should be the domain of the professional artist, but we should be engaging in the community to bring out artists who may either have not been identified, or people who think they may have the ability or want to learn, right? And I guess the example I give is, you know, I had an opportunity many times to attend the Steinbach Arts Council fundraiser just because I used to be sitting on the board of RCDMM, got to know a lot of different people around Manitoba, musical world, who would invite me out there. And I'm so impressed with the Steinbach Arts Council, there's the SAC, and how they made their programming available and very tangible to the people of Steinbach in terms of learning paint, you know, sculpture. I look at Gimli. Gimli has an amazing program where they, they fire, you know, they have a public, they have a store, they have public art being sold, you know, and they engage with the community. And on top of that, they have programming and learning. And they actually have a kiln, a fire, you know, pottery. Why don't we have anything like that? Why aren't we reaching out to the community and getting the community involved in public art? Because it's a huge, and I could give you an example. Recently, I was in South Transcendental for a meeting, and we got interrupted because we forgot that at 7 o'clock, the South Transcendental Painting Club starts. And there's like, you know, about 10 residents, mostly women, who showed up, and they're painting. But they get no support, or knowledge, or even marketing, or just, you know, we have community clubs all over the city who are doing this stuff, and you guys are plugging in, there's no promotion of it either. Why, why doesn't Winnipeg Arts Council do these things?
Thanks for the question. I mean, in terms of how some of the rural arts council works, it's a little bit of a different model than, than the urban arts council, in the sense that we sort of act primarily as a funder. But to your point about the, about the engagement that we have with community, I think part of what we do is support arts organizations in the community who do that. The other thing that we do is we run programs that do that, and we run them specifically through our public art program. So there is a, there's a thing we do called With Art, and that is where communities come together. Any, any kind of self-identified community can get matched with an artist to create a project that explores some question of community, whether it's, you know, socioeconomic, whether it's geographical, whether it's ethno-cultural. And, but what happens is they work with an artist, and both sides come in with no sort of preconceived notions about what they're going to make. But they work with an artist to explore those questions. So I think one of the most recent examples that we had is something that happened in Counselor Gilroy's ward with the South Valor Residents Association that created a piece at a community center. Those types of projects happen all over the city. They don't have, just happen at community centers. They happen with community groups, whether it's like IRCOM, whether it is neighborhood groups, whether it is wayfinders in the northwest part of the city. We are working with the resources we have to try and connect communities with the arts, and further to create expression of community that is then public.
I appreciate your response, and I know, you know, you have some resources. You do have millions of dollars every year from the city Winnipeg taxpayers. And I guess my question is, you know, for example, you know, the High Neighbor Festival has applied in the past. They have artists at the High Neighbor Festival, but they said, "Oh, no, we're not funding that." They can't get a grant from you, you know. And, and it's like, it's almost like the community outside of the downtown doesn't exist with the Winnipeg Arts Council. And I guess I'm challenging you, I'd say there's a grassroots group of people out there who want to be involved with art, who want to participate. But the Arts Council is kind of way up here, kind of high, you know, and we're, and there's no grassroots connection that should be happening with the Winnipeg Arts Council in the city of Winnipeg. And I hear what you're saying, it's a different model outside the city. But maybe it's a model that you guys should be looking at as well, right? So I'm, I'm just challenging you a little bit here.
For sure. And I mean, I, I can tell you that the High Neighbor Festival, I've never had a conversation with them in the dozen or so years that I've been running the grants. But I guess that's the best answer I can give you, sir.
You might have heard our comments. Counselor Schreier spearheaded, has been, was spearheading a project, Red Corner Henderson and Johnson. I know the time, the Winnipeg Arts Council kindly provided a public art grant when we did the Transcendental Square, about 500,000, which was the backdrop to the public stage there, the Archangel Pavilion. And is there something that, if, looking forward in the near term, in terms of your budget, public art, is there something that, that's something you would take into consideration?
Should there be a budget for public art? Then that's definitely the kind of thing that we can.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor, Mayor Gillingham is next. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, correct me if I'm wrong, first of all, Mr. Lloyd, I don't know if you've been presented at council since being appointed Executive Director. I think you came to EPC. Have you been to council since?
This is my first time at council since I've-
Okay, but that, that, let me just take the opportunity on behalf of all of us to congratulate you on your appointment as Executive Director. We have worked, I think, well with you in the past, during your time, in your various roles on the Winnipeg Arts Council, but really looking forward to working with you in your role. So congratulations-
Thank you.
First of all. So I really just putting a question together, just, just to be able to congratulate you. So are you willing to continue to work with us in all seriousness? So thank you for your patience, and are you willing to continue to work with us on, on the future as we continue to develop and build out this plan for, for public art? Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you. And that was really my, my hope in coming this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Next, we have Dr. Anne Lowen, Mr. Clerk. It's a delegation here. Yes? Okay. Yes? Dr. Anne Lowen, joining us online, I guess it's going to be online, in support of Item 7 of the Report of the Executive Policy Committee dated April 22, 2025. It's regarding a Land Dedication Reserve Fund Grant for the Coalition, Coalition to Save LeMay Forest. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you very much, Mayor Gillingham, councilors, delegates, and, and the speaker, and especially under these circumstances for rescheduling and for having this meeting again. And thank you for keeping this item related to the LeMay Forest on the agenda. I'd like to register my strong support for the city's continued financial and all other necessary forms of support, even in the light of the province's involvement, for the historical investigation and documentation of the Asyl Richat Orphanage Cemetery. I've personally spoken to a number of the historians, and they have been very, very diligent in their efforts. Emily Pigeon, Shelley Sweeney, and Tracy Turney have all indicated that their willingness and their desire to continue the work that they've already put in, in particular regarding the mothers who died at the Asyl, and possibly elsewhere, whose remains might also be contained in the communal cemetery at that location. As I've previously indicated when I presented in March, this is a place of historical sadness, and along with many other forms of oversight and neglect, this can elicit strong responses, including denialism, and a sense that one's own history and grieving even might be overlooked. But the city can demonstrate its commitment to human rights and to all of its citizens, and to reconciliation if we move forward and recognize that all people have value, that all are worthy of celebration and commemoration. And in that sense, this is a true humanitarian effort, and that has bearing on all of us. My hope is that we can do differently than in the past, and that historical wrongs that are publicly amended will improve community relations, increase the credibility of the city council itself, and result in a more equitable society. And in that regard, I'm hopeful that, and supportive of the Land Dedication Reserve Fund proceeding to fund, help fund the Asyl Richat Cemetery. And I'll just mention in addition that I'm encouraging others, citizens individually, and have done so myself, to make donations to the Societe Historique Saint Bonifat in support of this venture. I really appreciate the time and effort it takes to attend under these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions today? Not at this time? Thank you. Have a good day. Our next delegation is Mr. Gord Delbridge, President of QP Local 500, joining us in person to speak in support of Item 5 of the Report of the Standing Policy Committee on Water and Waste in the Environment. The report dated April 11 regarding in-house leaf and yard waste collection services. Welcome to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gillingham and councilors, for this opportunity to say a few words to you on this item on the agenda today. I would like to just say a brief couple of words about Counselor Schreier, if I may. I'm very proud to call Jason a friend, a longtime friend. I'm honored that I was able to, you know, have his presence. And he was the kind of person that made everyone happy, brought everyone together. And it was really nice hearing from all of you today, and some very kind words. And I remember doing the endorsement with Jason when he was first seeking to run for council. And we had many candidates that were seeking the endorsement, but I can tell you that, that was the longest meeting of any of the candidates. He was-
Really, really?
To no one's surprise. I mean, his responses were, to, to some of the questions were, were extensive, and they were, but they were filled with compassion and sincerity. And at the end of that meeting, you know, I said hands down, with that compassion and sincerity to working-class people, he's going to be our choice. And, and he was, and he was successful in getting elected. And I just want to mention that over the past, you know, day or so, I've had many people from across Canada, from the Canadian Union of Public Employees, reach out to me, offering their condolences. And on behalf of the Canadian Union of Public Employees right across Canada, I want to thank Jason for your commitment, your dedication to working-class people. And I'm proud to call you a friend, and you'll, you'll most certainly be missed.
Thank you so much for your remarks.
With respect to the item on the agenda, with, with regards to the yard waste collection, I know that this is a report that's going to, it's been a request that this, that the public service come back within 60 days with a report. I'd like to speak to it maybe more extensively then, once we see the results there. But a few points I would just like to share with you and encourage you to support the motion, as I do. We recently did a prob research poll, and we, the respondents to the poll with the question of, do you prefer, prefer public services over privatized and contracted services? I can tell you, 70%, 77% of Winnipeggers responded, saying that they want to see more public service, that they feel that it would be better for our local economy. And those numbers have increased from recent polls, and I'm not surprised that those numbers have increased. I think with the, with what's happening with the US and Canada, and our trade wars, and this 50 first state, you know, issues, and when we're looking to what's being done south of the border, where a lot of the public service is being eroded and eliminated, and the impacts that that's having, I think people resonate, this, it really resonates with people, and I'm not surprised that those, those polling numbers have increased. But people want to see public service. They want to see the accountability of, of services being provided publicly. A lot of people feel that the benefits of, of public service being delivered, nonprofit, in-house, carry a lot of value to our local economy. And so I'm not surprised to see those polling numbers. And so when this motion is put before you today, I would just ask you to keep in mind what we're hearing from Winnipeggers, and take that into consideration with your vote today. And I'm looking forward to hearing the report when it comes back. And thank you all for considering this motion.
Thank you. We have questions. Counselor Wyatt, then Counselor Edie?
Thanks, Gord. And thank you for your comments. You know, one of the things that Winnipeg used to be able to do as a city is, you know, we had our own asphalt plant, we had our own construction division compared to what we have today. And, you know, as you know, the infrastructure of our state, state of the city, we have a position, we're now collecting 200 million. It grows by 15 million a year. 200 million, it grows by 15 million a year. The local streets renewal reserve, the regional streets renewal reserve, we easily take that 200 million, you know, and borrow against it probably two to three billion over the next 10, 15 years, fix every broken lane, street, and sidewalk. But one of the things we could do is live up to a commitment of a previous councils where when they shut down the asphalt plant because they built, the company, because they built the virology lab there, the promise was made, new asphalt plant, you know, and a construction division. And to speak to the issue of construction inflation, one of the best ways we could put in check and end construction inflation is if we had our own construction division, where we could go to tender, and if the tenders come in outrageous again for the private sector, we say, well, you know what, we're giving you guys a miss this year. We're going to do it in-house until your numbers start coming in, you know, in reasonable fashion. What are your thoughts on that?
I think at any time that we, the city of Winnipeg puts ourselves in a position of becoming beholden to one sector, you've just opened yourself up to construction inflation, cost increases, because you've become beholden to this, you know, this one sector. We can learn from some of the mistakes that were made. We know that, you know, selling off Glacier Sound and gravel, having our own asphalt careers in place, the amount of money that could have been saved in budgets on a going forward basis, that amounts to, you know, dollars that can never be recouped. And it's important to learn from some of the mistakes that were made in the past, and understand that it's important to be competitive. And in order to be competitive, you don't give it to all one sector. And I'm not saying that you give it all to just the public sector. And there's certainly, there's places where the public sector are going to deliver best, that the private sector cannot do. And vice versa, the private sector can do it where the public sector can't. But we both have the opportunity to play a role in that field. It's important to remain competitive and hold those sectors accountable for potential inflation.
You know, and I guess one of the frustrating things is that we've seen in the last number of years, this has become more of an acute of an issue because of the very fact what's happened in the private sector. Private sector has contracted. You know, Ladco had a construction division that just simply got out of it. And then you have the existing players in the private sector buying each other out. So we're really down to like three, four, or five companies that bid, okay, in the city of Winnipeg, the lowest amount ever, right? And, and, and the need, and then on top of that, you have the province going out with their tenders out in the highways, right? And we don't coordinate the tenders yet with the province, right? And so they often put their tender out, and highway work is much cleaner, much easier to do than city work, right? And then we're putting our tenders out, and we're getting nailed with high construction inflation numbers coming back. Well, surprise, surprise. How much of this is, should we coordinate better with the province and the city of Winnipeg, right? Right now, there's zero coordination between the two bodies. And we're literally competing against each other. What are your thoughts on that?
You know, I think that there could be value in working together, where you're offering a lot of the similar type services. And, you know, maybe that's something that should be considered on a going forward basis. But I would say that when you put yourself in a position where, as you had mentioned, there's not really a lot of competition that's taking place out there anymore, when you've only got a few different contractors that are doing this work, we've got to look at, at bringing some of this work back in-house, where it's accountable to the citizens of Winnipeg, and so that we can remain competitive with the private sector.
And just a final follow-up anymore. It's an R U R question, and are you aware of these following things? Number one, province has their own gravel pits that we could be tapping into. We're not relying on the private sector. We could bring gravel up from North Dakota for about a third of the price on trains compared to what they're charging here. Province works with regards to immigration, in terms of workers. These are all the things we hear from our senior managers, saying, well, we can't be able to bring the price down. Well, we can. Aggregates available through province, and coordinating tenders with the province, and accessing labor through immigration and what have you, if that's what we need to do. All these things to be coordinated. Are you aware that really the issue in terms of construction inflation and the outrageous pricing that we keep getting every year coming in, that eats away at everything that we've been setting aside? We're really back to square one. We're not getting ahead of the ball because of their constantly, that we could actually, these issues are all resolvable, all resolvable, if we had the leadership at both levels of government, but here especially, taking this issue forward. What are your thoughts?
There's no question it can be done. It just takes the initiative. And, and we should be looking at different processes than we're currently following now. That we, in many aspects, they failed. Like, you look at the, and going back to construction inflation again, these numbers are sometimes just completely out of whack. And, you know, it's important to have some diversity there to ensure that we're being accountable to the citizens of Winnipeg and getting the best prices possible. And, and it can be done. It just takes the will and the incentive to do so.
Thank you. Counselor Edie?
Yes, thanks, Madam Speaker. I'll try to be quick. We have a new waste management fee that Winnipeggers weren't expecting. And Counselor Mays has moved this motion, trying to find some cheaper way of doing it so that the cost of the waste management fee can come down. We did amend the motion to get the cost of what it would cost for equipment to deliver the yard waste service on, in one zone or just across the whole city. My very specific question is, do you believe that the private sector should indicate what that cost of equipment is that they're passing on to the city of Winnipeg so that we can do a proper comparison?
I'm going to speak very candidly about this, because often I hear from sometimes members of council and members of the public, that the cost of purchasing the infrastructure and equipment would be too much for us to get into the business. And I often think to myself, can you really be that naive to think that the contractors, that the private sector are donating this equipment to us? It's not being donated to us. It's built into the cost of the contract. So we're buying the equipment for those contractors. And the taxpayers are buying this equipment. We can buy this equipment cheaper. The public service can, 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 you know, get loans at a better rate than the private sector often can. We get a better rate on our, our fuel costs. We have bulk purchasing for our fleet. We can do it cheaper. There's no question about it. We can get that equipment cheaper. I've been with, I've sat through administration, we looked at some of our garbage collection contracts and went through it detail by detail. And there's no question about it, it can be done. But to think that the, that we can't do this, and we can't bring this house, and that we could not be competitive, I think sometimes some of the scare is, is that we're going to be too competitive. We've seen it happen in other municipalities across the country, where they brought in, the public sector were, that municipality was once beholden to just the private sector. What they did is it dropped the cost of those contracts amongst the private sector. As a result, we've seen those contracts started to reduce those costs in order to be competitive so that they wouldn't expand on the, on the public sector. A lot of times, what companies do, and international companies, they'll get in, and they'll hope that the municipality sells off all of their infrastructure equipment and what it is to ever get back into the business. And what they'll do is they'll amortize those costs right across the nation, and they'll amortize those losses as a result of just getting her foot in the door to get that work done. And then they'll start selling this message that, well, we don't have the infrastructure, you can't do it. And they'll start, you know, lobbying council. But it's absurd to really think that, that we're not purchasing this equipment, because we are. It's built into the price of the contracts.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Mays.
Thank you. Thank you, Gord, for the comments about Counselor Schreier and for the social media tribute from QP. I think that was absolutely deserved, rock solid voting record. Just to follow up on, but I think Wyatt might have been channeling a bit of Counselor Schreier's rhetoric there. So, one question. This motion comes out of a report that came to us in July that said it's more expensive to do garbage pickup if you do it in-house in this zone. The same report said, and a lot of people in an 8-8 vote quoted that, same report, same report says cheaper to do
On favor, contrary, carried.
That same report in July, if we were all relying on the numbers to vote a particular way, the same report says cheaper to do leaf and yard waste in-house for that particular zone. So we're going to get a study, talking about various aspects of this. That's, that's great. But I wanted to ask you to just, to the extent you can, so seven years ago, almost, we, we do the most recent round of tendering out to Miller and GFL. Grievance from QP saying you haven't followed your own RFP, multi-year legal, oh, we're going to bring bulky in-house. No, we're going to bring some of multifamily in-house. No, we're not going to do any of it. We're just going to give QP a payout here, and we're just going to buy our way out of this grievance and settle it. So the, the hope here is to maybe deal with all of that before we do the contracting for garbage and recycle, try and get some sort of situation. But can you just talk about the aftermath and the years that it took to sort out the last time we did one of these seven-year-long contracts, and we didn't listen to the people from labor, frankly, and went ahead? And, and we did a few weeks later, Edie made a motion to bring bulky in-house. I remember that. So, to the extent you can, because I know you had to sign an NDA when all this thing got settled out. But can you talk about why it might be an advantage to see if we can work something out at the front end this time?
Yes, correct. At that time, it was said that it was too late, and we had to look at contract extensions. And I should mention that ever since any garbage collection has come, has been privatized, at every single RFP, there's been contract extensions. Should mention to you that I remember a number of years ago, I was talking to the owner of Antara, and they mentioned to me that they rely upon these contract extensions because they're very lucrative. So no surprise that every single RFP that has been issued on garbage collection since then has had a contract extension. If you look at the inflationary rates of the loss, you know, contract extension, that was unreal. I could, I could not believe those, those type of numbers. And so, I mean, here we are now. And we, I did have to sign an NDA. We did end up, you know, settling on, on the multifamily bin and the bulky waste, and we went through that. So I can't get into detail about that. But I would suggest that if any of you are able to look into it, you might, if you're concerned about costs, consulting, because I can't talk about it, but maybe you should consult with some administration and see how much those costs are.
Thank you. There is a commitment with the city over the noon hour. If anyone needs to depart, feel free to do so. Counselor Mays, any further questions? Or I've got Counselor Gilroy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Are you aware that I've talked with other councillors that have some in-house service, and has really helped in areas that are similar to mine, that have excess garbage that needs larger bulk pickups? And I guess, are you aware that having the equipment in-house would be, allow us to be able to deal with these matters more fast and efficient? Right now, we have to, basically, we have to call other companies to come and deal with some of the garbage issues we have within the inner city and within our encampments. So are you aware that, you know, it would be very helpful for the city to have in-house equipment for, for other needs as well?
Thank you, Counselor Gilroy. Mr. Delbridge, we can continue for a few moments, or do you wish to come back at around 1:30?
I'll, I'll be brief here, unless somebody's got questions for the question.
Thank you. So answering Counselor Gilroy?
You know, I'm aware, and, and one of the great advantages of having your in-home, in-house workforce is that they can adapt to your needs. And you can make changes, and, and you can do this on the fly as to what you need at any given time, especially on the inner city. One of the problems that you have with the private sector, where you've got a contract in place where it's very strict as to what the extent of the service is, that's unlike the collective agreement that we've got, which states that basically your classification, but at any given time, you can, you know, make changes to the scope of the work that they're doing, and within reason. And we'd always be willing to sit down and negotiate that with you, because this is something that we'd want to see successful as well. And we understand that the needs of the citizens of Winnipeg, especially in various wards, you know, this could be necessary. We currently do it now. We do it with many different areas right across the board with the city of Winnipeg, is that we're willing to, you know, adapt to the needs at any given time, often something you don't see when somebody has a contract in place.
Thank you. Counselor Wyatt?
Yeah, you know, it was about, I'd say, 30 years ago or less, under then Mayor Susan Thompson, her administration did a lot of damage to the public sector, eliminating the Parks Direct Department, among other things, including reducing the amount of areas in the city which were subject to contract for garbage collection. That literally wiped out local businesses here who were providing garbage collection in the city of Winnipeg. So we went for multinational corporations to provide the service instead. What are your thoughts about that? And bringing back smaller contract areas, it would be an opportunity possibly for the city to come back into the sector, but also for local businesses. I guess the other thing I want to add is really the private sector, as you know, relies on not providing a livable wage to their employees who are doing this. Now, having said that, you know, we here in the city have security officers here contracted to clerk's office who do not have a living wage. And yet, these people are having to go to food banks and do other things. We're relying on food banks on the backs of the churches and everything else, providing food banks, you know, to provide our garbage collection, right, in the city, or provide our security services here at City Hall. What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, there's no question, and I would suspect everyone should know this, we, Canadians right across the country, there's a big push to buy local. There's a big push for the unity of our nation to consider buying local and providing contracts locally, and the value that has for local business, for our local economy. When we start outsourcing work internationally or out of province, a lot of that money is leaving our province, and it's not helping local business. It's not helping our local economy. And maybe sometimes people may think, you know what, we can save a few dollars on this by doing so? We're not saving money. It's costing us through other spin-off impacts and effects. Right now, I'm telling you, I mean, I shouldn't have to tell you this, Canadians have got a big push on for everyone to, to buy local, to encourage more local purchasing, to award contracts locally, because of the value that has. People understand this. People know this. And, I mean, if we're going to, you know, do something that contradicts that, you're not standing with the majority of the public. I told you about a probe research poll that we did. We hear what Canadians are thinking now. This is what they want. As elected officials, you should stand up for the people, and the majority of the people, and what they want.
It was, the pandemic only hit us five years ago, and the folks in the, out there in the service industry, they kept things going. And so many of those folks in the service industry are not receiving a living wage. And here's an example of how hypocritical the city is, and how unethical it is to be issuing contracts, whether it be for a security officer in the front, or here, you're, you know, our garbage collection, where they can't get a living wage. These are the folks that took it on the chin during the pandemic. We relied on them de facto, right, to provide the service, keep things moving. And yet, here we live in a city where we continually undermine their ability to make a simple living. What are your thoughts on that? I mean, garbage, if you imagine, that's the one thing we all get calls on. When the garbage is not picked up, we get a phone call, right, from our constituents. Where's the garbage collection? Well, folks rely on it, and they know it's important. Why aren't we treating the employees, the people who are actually picking up that garbage with respect? The same respect that they did for us when the pandemic was on, and here we are, literally treating them like the very garbage they're picking up. What are your thoughts?
Thank you. One minute to wrap up.
If you want to prove the city that we live in, to make it the Winnipeg that we all want, treat people with dignity, treat people, workers with dignity, and encourage companies and business that are going to treat people with dignity. And the city of Winnipeg, as an employer, should be treating people with dignity, and that'll get us to the Winnipeg that we all want.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Delbridge, for your presentation. With that, I'm going to, we're going to recess and reconvene at 1:30. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'd like to reconvene our council meeting of May 2nd, 2025. We're on the reports of the Executive Policy Committee. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to introduce the report and move adoption of consent agenda, items one to 15.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Next is the, just a moment here.
No motions here?
No motions. There's bylaws, Mr. Mayor. No motions, there's bylaws, Mr Mayor. Pardon me, just, okay, there was a motion circulated, let me just have a look. Yes, motion one, moved by councillor Luke, seconded by councillor Rollins regarding an updated age-friendly Winnipeg action plan, that'll be an automatic referral, thank you. Mr Mayor, the bylaws?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the bylaw number two, 2025, be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number two of 2025.
Madam Speaker, I move the bylaw number two, 2025, be read a third time, and that the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Madam Speaker, I move the bylaws number four, probably forty, 2025, be read a first time.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number forty of 2025.
Madam Speaker, I move the bylaw number forty, 2025, be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number forty of 2025.
And Madam Speaker, I move that the rule be suspended, and bylaw number forty, 2025, be read a third time, and that the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. We'll now have question period for the mayor. Councillor Wyatt, followed by councillor Mays.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we live in a world where Canadians, or Canadians, people all over the world are consuming the equivalent of credit card plastic a week. Microplastics and nanoplastics are raining down all over the world. We live in a world where we know that our greenhouse gases and the emissions are driving up the world's temperature by one and a half points, and that if we go any higher, we'll be facing massive consequences. Living in a world where forests are being ripped down, we're living in a world where we're living through the greatest extinction event in world history with over 100 species a day being wiped out. And all this due to the fact that we have a market system, capitalist economy, that seems to be intent on destroying the planet and all things that are livable on it, and that the economy on the present course, including ours, is heading us in a direction that, you know, we won't want to dream of for our children, grandchildren, great grandchildren, and all of us have entered public life, public office, on the idea, I think, that we'd want to leave behind a better planet or a better community than what we found, or what we hear. My question is, these are things that I think about a lot, these are thoughts that I have, I often ponder these thoughts, and in terms of where we're heading as a civilization planner, does the mayor give any thought to these things? And if you have any thoughts along these lines, we'd be pretty sure at this point.
Thank you. Mr Mayor?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I want to thank the councillor for the question. Yes, I do give thought to some of these matters, and I think that that's one of the reasons specifically why, in just a few moments, I'll be supporting on a many motion, I think that you and others are bringing forward related to what the city Winnipeg could do to preserve the area around and the LeMay Forest, and partner with the province of Manitoba. I won't steal your preamble thunder of that motion, but, you know, that's one of the ways that we can preserve lands. I grew up on a farm, as all of you know, my family's still on the farm. One of the things that I've been pleased to see, in the, farmers and landowners continue to reprioritize wetlands, and the preservation of wetlands, and the restoration of wetlands, so that we are, you know, doing our part to, they're doing their part to find ways to address some of these natural challenges, challenges of our planet as well. So I think our policies that we have adopted as the city Winnipeg, and I've said yes to many of them, and voted in favor of them when it comes to our climate action plan, yes, we've got a long way to go, but I'm supportive of us, you know, beginning to prioritize some of those. One of the final things I'll say is, again, and it's a good work of this council, specifically councillor Rollins, who, you know, brought forward the idea that we co-created as a city a biodiversity plan, and co-created with indigenous peoples. It's the first time we have ever done that as a city. I don't know if any city, maybe there's a city in Canada that's done it, but nonetheless, we are working to bring forward a, you know, green space biodiversity plan that is co-created with the First Nations people, and Métis and indigenous, Inuit people, who have been stewards of these lands for, long before we got here. And so, some of these initiatives are specifically in response to, in anticipation of the work that we have to do to try to turn the tide, to make our world a healthier world. Thank you.
Thank you. Second question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I believe that what we're doing to mother, there's a symbiotic relationship between what we're doing there, and in terms of our society today, in terms of its state of health, mental health or lack thereof, we see all the symptoms of it, homelessness, what's happening in the streets, for example, of every major city in Canada, across the world, many western cities. And with regards to mental health addiction, some of the addictions are very much stark and not socially acceptable, but yet we have socially acceptable addictions, such as the guy who has a million dollars in the bank, but he's got to get another million, but that's a socially acceptable addiction. So, any thoughts in terms of the broken society that we have, which I think is related to the destruction we're doing to the earth itself? Any thoughts in terms of what we can do as a community to start to fix the brokenness that exists across our city?
Thank you. Mayor Gillingham?
I want to thank the councillor for his question. Years ago, I think in decades past, we would say, look, our role is just potholes and pipes, and police officers, and parks, and that primarily at the core of our responsibility as a city, as municipality, those are our core areas, services we have to deliver, we've got to prioritize those. However, the reality is, and we've just seen it, I think in the first half of our meeting today, we're people first, and we are to be there for one another, care for one another. A strong society, a strong city, is built on, you know, people of the city who care for their neighbor, who watch out for one another. We celebrate often in our city the highlights of the times in our 150-year history, when the people of Winnipeg came together to support one another. Just today, the city Winnipeg Instagram account, if you've seen it, it's a highlight of 75 years ago this month, when we banded together to combat the 1950 flood. Neighbors coming together to watch out for one another. The councillor's right, in these days, the challenges of mental health, and the associated sometimes things that go along with that, are seemingly ubiquitous, they seem to be everywhere. They know no boundary, socioeconomic boundary, they know no race or culture boundary, it's part of the whole person. And so, I think to the degree to which, at a core level, to the degree to which we are human and here for one another, we have to be doing all we can to look out for one another. It's one of the reasons why, and you heard it said today, again, in light of everything we've gone through this week with the loss of councillor Schreier, I'll put it on the record, let's check in on one another, let's call one another, let's text one another, let's just try to be there for one another, and even beyond this. And so, we have, in the last couple of budgets, I know we have increased funding, for example, to our fire paramedic department, for mental health and emotional supports that they need because of the sheer magnitude and volume and depth of the things that they're seeing every day. One of the firefighters the other day, I stopped by one of the fire halls, and he said, it's just, to see this once in a while, what we see, and what we, the calls we attend to, it's part of the job. To see it every day, multiple times a day, it's not normal. And you can't, you can't continue to expose yourself to that, day in, day out, multiple times a day, and not be affected. So, these are the realities that we're working with, and I want to commend this council, who tries to, yes, focus on delivering the core services, but understand that the people, the 10,000 people who work for the city Winnipeg are people first, with emotional, mental, physical, spiritual, you know, needs, that we also try to find ways to acknowledge and support. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and-
Next question, thank you.
Experience with the LeMay Forest, I saw a lot of these young indigenous leaders who are, they call themselves young indigenous warriors, and they're not going to be sitting idle warriors much longer, based on what we're doing or not doing. So, I would ask another very, I guess, a deep question, and that is this, in the mayor's opinion, does the, does the Winnipeg Jets have a chance winning the Stanley Cup?
Thank you, councillor Wyatt. Mayor Gillingham?
Yeah, thank you. I'll take that under advisement, and look into the matter and get back to the councillor in the coming weeks. Thank you.
We always have a chance.
Next question is from councillor Mays.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For three years of my life, I worked as a, as a public servant in the Ontario Public Service, a professional public service, and one of the key messages was that, once the public service makes a decision, it speaks with one voice. So I want to ask the mayor if he would be willing to sit down with Mr Ambroster and myself, and just get clarification before our week-long odyssey starting June 2nd into the fourplex hearing. Last month, we had a vote on a $900 million road project, chief peg was extension, public service spoke, this road project will pay for itself, in fact, will unlock benefits from three new distant suburbs, precincts A, B, and D. I just want to make sure that that is the message, because it would be profoundly disrespectful to the people of St. James, and River Heights, and St. Vatell, if we come here in June and are told, we have to do these fourplexes, we have to fundamentally alter the character of some of your older neighborhoods, or else we're going to have to build new road projects in distant suburbs, and we all know, they lose money and are inefficient. So the public service has given us a report, we voted on it, I voted with that report, I voted with the mayor, 13 to 3, I think it was. People can have their own individual opinions, people can have their own views on matters, but you cannot tell as a public service, one meeting, that these projects more than pay for themselves, and will unlock benefits from distant suburbs, and then turn around and tell other parts of the city, we're sorry, we have to fundamentally alter the character of your neighborhoods, or otherwise, we're going to have to build all this horizontal infrastructure with, well, more suburbs and more roads. So, if councillor Allard wants to say that, he is welcome to, he has been dead consistent on this over the years, and voted against both Kenniston and Pegwass, so did councillor Gilroy. But for the public service, who will be the applicant, who will be making a presentation to us, we're going to have to vote on something because the federal government makes it a condition. I get that, we'll sort it out. But can the mayor sit down with Mr Ambroster and I, just to confirm that the public service is not going to somehow dramatically change its view and its opinion, and present to us in June, the conception that we have to do these projects because, well, otherwise, we'd have to build road projects like Chief Pegwass, and service precincts A, B, and D? Because public service has spoken with one voice and said, those projects make sense. So it'd be more than disrespectful to the people of St. Vatell, St. James, River Heights, and other parts of the city to hear the complete contrary.
Thank you. Mr Mayor?
I want to thank the councillor for his question. Yeah, I mean, I think it's fair to say that different projects may have different level of benefit, I think that's understood, but to the question, yes, I'd be glad to sit down with the councillor, and I'll volunteer, as requested, our interim CEO as well, to join us for that meeting. Thank you.
Good.
Any further questions? Councillor Gilroy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to ask a question to the mayor, if he can maybe get back to me on maybe what the city's looking at doing. I am concerned about the loss of staff that we're having. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of staff leave, and some of them are very senior roles. I'm concerned about the ability to retain staff, and I know that there's been, me and him disagree on the work-from-home policy stance that he's taken. I do feel that in a modern, a modern day like this, we need to be able to have the ability to retain staff, and some of that is looking at what other people are doing to encourage staff.
Councillor Gilroy, one question?
So, yeah, so just, if he can maybe talk to me a little bit on what he's working on, and to kind of encourage people to want to work for the city Winnipeg, and to look at retaining the staff that we do have.
Thank you for the question. Mr Mayor?
Yes, I want to thank the councillor for the question. No doubt, every time there's a staff member that has served the city Winnipeg for a long time, and we've worked, sometimes we've worked with them directly, and they leave, we sometimes wonder why, is it just a matter of they've done their years, or they have some other opportunity they're moving to, or just what may be the case? So, certainly glad to speak to the councillor about this. I think of the question that was asked of councillor Luke and myself just yesterday at a transit announcement, about the fact that months ago, years ago, we had a challenge hiring and retaining transit drivers. Well, this council made a decision to make an investment in transit, and now, you know, we have been recruited and recruited successfully, so there's a lot of new transit drivers. We had the same thing with waiting pool attendance, where we had a challenge, we focused on that, the department came up with a strategy, now, you know, the shortages are gone and never eliminated, because we have people moving into roles and being hired and enjoying, you know, the launch of a career in the public service. But, yes, ultimately, we'd be glad to sit down with the councillor and have further discussion on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Second question?
Work-life, sometimes when the leader or the leadership of an organization moves on or retires, it's also, sometimes other employees take a look and say, well, is it my time too? Do I want to make a change? We take a look at what happened during COVID, for example, and my wife and I have some really close friends, there's, you know, six of us all together that have been friends for 30 years, five of us changed, basically made a change in our career life, out of six, in that timeframe. So sometimes, you know, when things change, it's a cascading domino effect, and other people who are employed say, well, maybe, maybe I'm going to, you know, make, take this opportunity to make a change in my professional life as well. So we don't know all the details there, but certainly, we are working hard as a committee to hire the next CEO. Resumes have been received, the crew that is doing the search has actively engaged individuals who may be interested, and basically, we are getting a list, kind of whittled down to some key candidates.
Councillors?
So that's coming at this time.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Final question, councillor Gilroy?
Thank you. And could we find out if there's any exit interviews? It is quite a lot of staff, so this isn't just a small number of staff, a lot of them in senior positions, just worried about, you know, you know, how are we making sure that we're retaining the staff we have, and encouraging people to apply? So just, maybe, are we doing, I'd like to know if we're doing exit interviews and finding out maybe why they're leaving.
Thank you. Mr Mayor?
Thank you, that's a good question. I think it's a question maybe for our interim CEO, to see if there's exit interviews done in some departments, or if that's part of the practice, or just what may be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, next is the Standing Policy Committee on Public Works. Councillor Luke?
Yes, two items. I'd like to move items one and two, so I guess that's consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions for our chair, for councillor Luke? Next committee, Standing Policy Committee on Finance and Economic Development, there's no reports today, and no motions, I believe. We'll have question period for our chair. Any questions for councillor Bowdy? No questions today. Next is the Standing Policy Committee on Property and Development. We do have two reports today, our chair councillor Duncan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to introduce the report of March 6, 2025, and move adoption of the consent agenda, which includes item two.
There's no motion with that one, Mr Clerk, correct? Pardon me? Yeah, okay, all in favor of item two?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. I want to remind councillors to be at their seat for vote when votes come in. All right. Next, councillor Duncan?
Okay, I'll introduce the report of April 16, and move adoption, consent agenda, items one through six, eight through 10. I believe there's an appetite to pull item number seven from my colleague.
I'll call the question on items one through six, eight through 10, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Mr Clerk?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to be recorded in opposition to report item two, please.
That's noted, thank you. Councillor Edie in opposition, item two. Mr Clerk, item seven?
Item seven, rezoning 815 Pandora Avenue West, DAZ 216/2024.
Thank you. Councillor Duncan?
I had a request to-
I had a request to have this sent back to Property and Development for a very brief amendment. I have agreed to support that at this point in time. I'll hear from my council colleague if he wishes to.
Yeah, thank you. That's your introduction. Is there an amending motion?
I could, I'm just writing it out now.
Are you doing a referral?
Well, we could deal with that at the committee or we could move the amendment here as well, council.
I don't see anything circulated.
No, it's not circulated, so.
It's coming?
I have it here, but I would need a moment to do that.
Okay, is there any other speakers at the moment?
I can explain the intent of it if that's a desire.
Well, you can move referral without instructions.
Or we could have that, yeah.
I apologize. To be clear, what item, is this the LeMay item?
No.
I apologize. Thank you.
Just for clarification, 815 Pandora Avenue. Just to clarify, councillor Duncan, you are moving referral of the item?
Yeah, if there's nothing here to consider for amendment at this point in time, we can refer.
Okay, so councillor Duncan moves referral back to the Standing Policy Committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. No motions today?
Into the last item?
Yes, noted. We have a notice of motion under this committee from the March 27 council meeting. It's regarding expropriation and rezoning of LeMay Forest. There's also an amending motion for this item that's been circulated, moved by councillor Chambers, seconded by councillor Wyatt. So first, we'll hear from you, councillor Wyatt, on the main motion. And then councillor Chambers, your opportunity to introduce the amending motion.
Well, my understanding, the main motion, where you're going to receive it is information? The notice of motion? Oh, okay.
I think it still stands, but there's an amendment that you have.
Yeah, that's mine. Yeah, I support the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Chambers, the main item and the amending motion?
Yeah, so the amending motion is basically asking our public service to work closely with the province, also considering some of the land that the city of Winnipeg owns near LeMay Forest to potentially consider that as part of parkland as well.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Wyatt, your closing. That was your opportunity to speak. Any other comments? Mayor Gillingham?
There's a motion to, we're just speaking on, yeah, I just want to thank councillors Chambers and Wyatt for this. City Winnipeg, as you may know, does have property in the, you know, adjacent to the property question that the province of Manitoba has indicated, they're going to be expropriating. This would be, could be the city of Winnipeg's contribution to kind of put it all together, consolidate all the lands into a larger space, a larger park that could be preserved. And so this is another opportunity, I think, for us as a city to fulfill some of our goals related to adding green space and protecting green space while also a goal of finding ways to work with the province, ultimately for the benefit of the people we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Wyatt, or first councillor Chambers, do you wish to close? On the amending motion?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to rise to say a few words to, first of all, thank all of the community volunteers who have got involved on this issue. I was brought to this issue quite by accident. I'm a member of councillors. Councillors may not be aware of this. I got a phone call one day. I was sitting in my porch at home on a Sunday, having a cigarette and reading the newspaper. And I got a call from a friend whose last name, I won't say, his first name is David, who I've known for many, many years. He's with the Winnipeg Fire Service. And he says, "Have you heard about this LeMay Forest thing?" And this was in January. And I said, "No, I haven't heard a thing." I said, "What are you talking about?" And he started explaining to me, his girlfriend lives down in St. Norbert. So I said, "Well, let's go look at it." And he said, "What do you mean?" I said, "Well, let's go look at it." And he said, "Wait, right now?" And I said, "Yes." So we drove over in his truck, jumped in my truck, we drove down. And we were there, it was pretty cold. And we walked actually into the property and found out later that we were trespassing. And we walked around. I was able to meet at that time, Weeping Willow and some other indigenous leaders around the sweat lodge that was located there. And it really brought back memories to me of my own childhood and growing up on Almy Avenue and the forest there. One of the first things I did when I got elected in 2002 was bring the city naturists out to the forest that I grew up on, on Almy Avenue, see if it could be saved. I wanted to preserve it and ironically or sadly, drainage patterns in the area had been altered with some housing that went up on Almy and caused the forest that I grew up in, which was very healthy at the time, because we would build forests and ride our bikes and, you know, enjoyed the love of mother nature, that it basically caused most of the forest to rot out. And so it wasn't even a Class D in terms of worth saving. So when I walked through LeMay Forest, it really brought back that feeling, the sweat lodge, to me, meant a lot through Aurora when I attended there. And I just saw the passion of the residents. And I just want to thank all the residents, you know, Louise May, everybody who got involved from the community, Kat Goche, and it was just remarkable. I had a chance to attend the university of, they put on a session on a Saturday night at the University of Winnipeg in a theater there. Brought up many speakers on the various subjects, including the fact of the 3,000-plus children who are buried inside and in the grounds of LeMay Forest, many of them unmarked graves at a orphanage that we heard was there 100 years or less ago. And so I just wanted to thank them and I wanted to thank all the leaders. I want to thank also, Madam Speaker, so I was in Calgary when I got a call, panic call on a Friday morning, last Friday I was there, it was from Louise May because they had a challenge, the court, or challenge in court, the developer and his representative. It all got dropped that morning in the court and the chainsaws were out. So I started reaching out to Mike Kelly in the premier's office via text. And Mike got back to me right away saying, "Well, we're actually got all the lawyers here right now in the premier's office talking about this." And I, maybe I was a bit too direct with Mike, but I said, "Well, you have a lot of power. You can nationalize, you can expropriate." I gave examples of new flower industries where they nationalized it, which was Ed Flyer, to keep the plant alive. Gary Filman, one day, we opened up the newspaper in this province and the conservative premier had nationalized the gas company. And so I said, "There's lots of things you can do. You have lots of power as a provincial government." I said, "But, you know," at that point, Louise was saying, "You got to get on a plane, you got to get back. We're going to chain ourselves to the trees." I said, "Well, I've been arrested before. I still get to be arrested again." So, you know, and that was kind of like where it was at. And then on the Monday, the premier stepped up and said he was expropriating the land for the purpose of provincial park and saving the forest. So what I, a week ago Monday, they had a ceremony out at the site. I was able to attend. They invited me and it was a very moving ceremony in the evening. They had everybody bring potluck, food and everything and, you know, you know, and a good number of the provincial government's caucus were there, little MLAs and MLAs from elsewhere. Minister was attending, and I just wanted, I thanked them there. And I just wanted to say that again, I want to thank premier Wab Canoo for his leadership on this matter and for stepping up. I thought we probably would have lost it, but, and the forest is remarkable, right? It's 22 acres, but you have trees in there that apparently are over 250 years old, which is fairly, fairly old from Manitoba. You have species that have been identified that are not endangered but on the risk of endangerment. And you have a sweat lodge that's been operating there apparently for three decades or more right in the center of the forest. When you walk through the forest, it gives you a real sense of peace. They produced photographs, actually, at the state university, at the University of Winnipeg seminar. And I, they offered it for people to take photographs, for some of the photographs were here too, by the way. And when I left, as many as possible, and I took a number of them. The beauty of the forest is it's just amazing. It's just as beautiful in the summer, winter, as it is in the summer. And it has a real connection to the neighborhood. And I guess I'd like to quote Izzy Asper, who used to say that, you know, Manitoba or Winnipeg doesn't have mountains, we don't have valleys, but we have rivers and we have forests along those rivers. And he said, "We should be celebrating and preserving that." And here's an opportunity where we're able to do that. I know the city has challenged itself to, to secure or to expand the park system by 1,000 acres, a lot of it natural park to what the mayor spoke about before biodiversity. Right now, and South Transcendence is going on for a year now, we've been meeting every second Wednesday to write a secondary plan, working with developer, the planning department of the city of Winnipeg and a resident advisory group appointed by this process. We meet out at South Transcendence Community Center. And we are, we are, we've challenged ourselves to build a 21st century community. And we've also identified lots of forested lands that are being now surveyed. The city lands have been surveyed in terms of the quality of the forest and animal life. And now we're reaching out to the property owners, private property owners to do the same. And we're hoping to be able to establish some tools, at least a toolkit of the secondary plan, to allow us some funding mechanisms to secure this land for a new purpose of new regional park. The only regional park in northeast Winnipeg other than Bueller, which is considered not a regional park in the sense or traditional, let's say it's Cinnabon Park, it's more of a recreational type of park. The only regional park in our area is Kilkona Park. And, you know, you could put, as far as I'm concerned, you could put as much lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. And Kilkona Park's a garbage dump, right? And it's big, and it's great. It's been turned into an off-leash dog park. It's a massive, massive off-leash dog park. That's wonderful, but you're not going to get any trees growing up there off of the garbage dump we got. And so here's a chance in northeast Winnipeg, which has been growing exponentially, we have not kept up with new regional parks in the community or in the city, to establish one. It wouldn't be a linear leisure, regional park, I call it. It'd be more of a nonlinear one. It would kind of snake through and circumvent the area, require land assembly. But we're also challenging ourselves on issues like new community center. How are we going to pay for that? We're talking about creating the first HOA bylaw in the city of Winnipeg, homeowners association bylaw. If that comes forward in the plan, as well as throwing out other issues of timing and services. So when the developers in the area come forward and file an application, a lot of these things will be sorted out through the secondary plan, which is not commonly done. We usually, yeah, I just want to say, Madam Speaker, just, can I just, two minutes?
Councillor Wyatt, wrap up.
I'll wrap up back.
There's no extension at this time, so just.
Okay, I just want to say, I want to thank the premier for his leadership on this matter, that of Mike Kelly, premier's office, and all the volunteers, everybody who got involved in this issue. I think it's great news and look forward to it becoming an official provincial park. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wyatt. I'll call the question on the amending motion to the notice of motion. Motion two, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. And the vote on the main motion is amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. We'll now move into bylaws under PND. Councillor Duncan?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll move that the following bylaws be read a first time. Bylaw number 43, 2025. Bylaw number 44, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 43 of 2025 and bylaw 44 of 2025.
Thank you. Councillor Duncan?
Thank you. I will move that bylaw number 134, 2024 be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 134 of 2024.
Councillor Duncan?
I'll move that bylaw number 134, 2024 be read a third time and that same be passed and ordered to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. We'll now move into question period for this committee. Seeing no questions, next is the Standing Policy Committee on Water and Waste and the Environment. Councillor Eady?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to introduce the report of April the 11th, 2025, and move consent agenda items one through five. Two and five?
Two has been pulled, which is South End Sewer Treatment Plant. Five, in-house leaf and yard waste collection services. Okay, thank you. I'll call the question on one, three, four. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Mr. Clerk?
Item two, request for budget revision for the South End Sewer Treatment Plant Nutrient Removal Expansion Capital Project.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll just briefly express that the recommendations in this report are very important in that our South End Sewer Plant needs to be completed in a manner that it will be able to be operated appropriately for the next, who knows, 30 years or whatever. And there's a number of items that may or may not be done. And I hope that my colleagues see fit to vote for the recommendation in here. I should also mention, though, that there is a surety provided in terms of bond in this particular construction project, Madam Speaker. However, making claims, if need be, to complete the work, it needs to be taken care of ASAP and therefore, the bond that's being set aside, claims against it can't be made, it's not going to happen fast enough in the city of Winnipeg. Water and waste needs the money in order to proceed in the case that the many items that were still left, not completed, get done so that the plant can, it is operating according to license at the moment, but the number of things that need to happen there is about the continued operation of the nutrient removal and the ability of this water control center to keep sewage out of the Red River.
Mr. Mays?
Thank you. I pulled this, not so much to vote against it. Councillor Rollins and I did vote against at committee. Just to highlight the concern that we have here, at least that I had, councillor Rollins can speak for herself, of course. The concern is around the funding source, which is a temporary loan from the combined sewer budget. I'm not convinced that will be temporary. There are a number of problems with that. I mean, the work needs to be done. As always, we're presented with these reports from the civil service saying, "Well, it's got to be done right now, right now. We're no time, no time for debate. You got to just, you know, you got to approve it." So fine, $10 million for more work at the South End Plant, fine, hopefully concluding that unfortunate voyage. But the funding source, the CSO projects, just to highlight this, so we are projecting to finish the work in the late 2090s at this stage, 50 years after the provincial deadline. We are faced with a fact situation where we've allocated, to the mayor's credit when he was chair of finance, we allocated $45 million instead of 30 for a four-year span in the capital budget. That's going to run out in a few years and we'll go back to 30 million. We know that our own report in 2019 said, "This should be 30 million from us, 30 from the province, 30 from the feds to get this thing done by 2045." We've never asked the province, we've never asked the federal government for help, but we somehow fault them for not funding. Not only are we supposed to be at 30 million, we're supposed to be at 30 million adjusted for inflation each year, so we're actually falling further behind. So we finally have some money in the bank here, so instead of firing it into work, we're going to loan it out to another project in the sewage treatment realm. And the staff are saying, "Well, we don't, there's no industry capacity to do more than 30 million a year." So they're also saying, "There's not 70 years of work left to do." I was accused of, you know, misstating things. And I said, "It's your own, it's your own damn report. It's your own timeline. It's right there in the 2019 report. Will be done in the 2090s." So we need to get the following clarified. We need to find out, is there 70 years of work left to do? That's what our own report says. Number two, if we can't do more than 30 million dollars a year worth of work, shouldn't we be saying that? Shouldn't we tell the province that? Because we're facing a deadline of 2045 and our own report says we need to do 90 million dollars worth of work. So if we can't do more than 30, the fact situation's completely garbled here. So we need that clarified by Mr. Shanks. We need to know how much work can be done and realistically, how we can get that funding arranged. Or we can simply carry on the way we are. On the good news side, in the last month, we had a vote that said, "We want a report back from the staff on getting done." Armstrong Combined Sewer District, I believe, Riverbend, and certainly Mission, the big three. and certainly Mission, the big three that have yet, that are to come, let's get those done in the 2030s, which is about when they're supposed to be done under the provincial guideline, terrific. So that'll cost us some money, that'll have an impact on the rate structure. Wouldn't you want to keep the 10 million and reduce the impact on the rate structure? Apparently not, so, so it goes, we will go forward and hopefully get that costing exercise done. So, all of us will sit here in a few months' time with a cost estimate, that will say, look, if we, we don't have to do it all by 2045, but if we just do the big ones, none of which are near my ward, if we just do the big ones, that'll get us most of the way toward the target. Well, we should feel pretty good about that at the end of this term, if we can at least get that done, get a funding model in place, we can feel, we can say to our children and our grandchildren, should we have them, well, we didn't, we didn't do nothing, we didn't leave it till 2095, we got most of it done, we got the major part of it done, it's a great environmental initiative, if we can get it done, and it's in different parts of the city, and it'll help with development, because it'll open up space in the pipes. Lots of good news to come from this, if we can get there, so I'll vote for it today, it doesn't really, you know, it's going to pass anyway, but the key message here is, let's at least salvage something on the combined sewer, let's at least do the three big projects, let's get some clarity from staff on what that'll cost, and if we can't do more than $30 million a year worth of work, why the hell did we budget $45 million for four straight years? Why didn't the staff tell us that before we did that? We need some, we need some better number crunching, frankly, from, from the water and waste folks, so we can know if we're throwing money away or not, or if there's any chance of getting to this target. So I'll end with, the mayor sometimes talks about, I think, will the council of 2045 or so, 20, the 2040s, will the council in the 2040s look back on some of our decisions and say we shirked our responsibilities or not? It's a good device, it's a good, it's a good thought device, so I would hope that we don't think, yeah, they'll be delighted if we left this on a trajectory to finish by the 2090s, so Counsel Allard's then 90-year-old son can represent all of us, because we'll all be dead when we finally get this thing done. No, I think the, I think the council of 2040s would say, well, that's good, they, they did the right thing, they got the funding together, they did most of the work by the 2030s, that helped the whole city, it was a great environmental project. So hopefully, we can get that report in the very near future and do the right thing on the combined sewer. The mayor, to his credit, as Finance Chair, did get the funding accelerated to 45 million a year, maybe it'll take that, maybe less, to get these three big ones done, but it's worth highlighting again, this, we can't leave this to the 2090s, I don't think the council of 2040s would favor that, so let's try and get this thing done when the funding report comes back in a few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mays, next speaker. Okay, back to you, Counsel Reedy, for close.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, and I just want to clarify some things here, Madam Speaker, the CSO is very important work that needs to be done, and I don't think anybody around this table, Madam Speaker, is really wanting to not get as much CSO work done as we can. The major trunk sewers that are going into these CSO areas, that's usually done by construction companies that are bidding from outside of the province, because they have that tunneling technology that's required for huge land drainage pipes. But we have a construction industry here in Winnipeg, and yeah, there's inflation for sure, Madam Speaker, on that, but to be clear, the companies, the local companies that bid on the projects to complete the CSO are fully subscribed now, Madam Speaker, this is what I hear from water and waste, and I believe them, because right now, they're still just finishing off the East Jefferson CSO area, there's still some work happening, there's about, oh, I think about, well, probably many blocks yet to finish, I think it's going to be finished this year or next year, certain time that the work can get done. And there's other sewer work that has to happen around the city, which is why we hear from Counsel Rollins, who I'll be talking to about her issue in Wildwood, because there's a serious sewer land drainage problem there, but ultimately, right now, the local construction companies are fully subscribed, and so, you know, this money that's here, it will be put back, it's being borrowed, because we got a great bid that was 23 point something million under the estimate, and you know what, I think that my colleague probably makes a good point, can we get some better numbers to project what, what we're needing to spend into the future, and we know that that's going to, to make that estimate better, because 2045 is just a guesstimate, pretty well, when you look out to the very long-term future, but the, the ratepayers have already paid the money, it sits in the environmental fund dedicated to CSO, this money will be replaced back into the CSO program, before it will probably be needed to continue, say, Mission and Armstrong, Armstrong's just getting underway, Mission's still, like, there's a lot of work to do in these big ones, but there's a lot of smaller areas that also need it in the future, and we'll have better estimates as the program goes along. So this is about the actual treatment of the sewer water, that we need to remove the nutrients, because we don't want to cause problems for Lake Winnipeg, and we're meeting our obligations under licensing, so again, it's worthwhile to do it, and, and I'll just say it again, actually, Madam Speaker, you know, we talked about death today, I heard today, in the Netherlands, there's a ceremony, there's veterans who are 101, 102, 105, there's quite, there's about 20 Canadians who are in their hundreds, some 196. So to say that I'm going to be dead in 2045, no, thank you.
Hey, there we go. To Counsel Reedy, who, if he took offense at that, I think that's an unfortunate use by me, obviously, under the circumstances.
Thank you, thank you both. No further speakers, I'll call the question on item two, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Next is item five.
Item five, in-house leaf and yard waste collection services.
Thank you, Counsel Reedy.
Sorry, pardon me, I'll introduce number five, actually, I await to hear from my colleague, this is a motion, I really want to, I'm hoping that we can get this and look at this, that it's going to save Winnipeggers money on their waste management fee, because we introduced that fee this year, a lot of people did not expect it, we did budget for it, and it was there, and it's moving forward, it will be reduced from the 2024 that we had to pay back, however, over some time, and, but there are, this initiative could save money and lower that fee, that fee, and as well as 100, the 100% producer pay for recycling could save us that money, and that could be, the province picks it up because producers are paying, that could reduce the need for our waste management fee. So anyway, I look forward to hear from my colleague on the yard, bringing yard waste collection in-house.
Thank you, any further speakers, Counsel Mays?
Thanks, Counsel Reedy, for supporting this, which is consistent with his work over the years, certainly on, on trying to bring some of this work back in-house, he was certainly the author of the motion back in, I think, 2016, 20, October 2016, I think, October 2015, around bringing the bulky waste in-house, which we voted to do, then we switched to, no, let's bring one of the contracts for multifamily pickup in-house as a pilot project, and we buy the vehicles, and then we have a disagreement with QP, who then grieved the interpretation of the grievance settlement, and it all just disintegrates, and finally, as Mr. Delbord said, we, there was a settlement involving some funds being paid out, which obviously required an NDA to be signed by the union. So where does that leave us today? Let's get, we had a report in July, hopefully, we can bring Counsel Wyatt over to our side in the next vote, because it was an 8-8 vote, so it's very close, 8-8 vote in July on bringing in-house garbage collection in the downtown zone, very unfortunate misunderstanding about how we had defined the zone, the staff presenting a map that was completely different than what was called for, vastly different than what was called for in the motion, but in any event, the numbers that were presented were heavily relied upon by a number of people who spoke in this chamber, saying, well, look, it's going to be more expensive to bring garbage in, just look at the numbers in the report. The numbers in the report also said, leaf and yard waste would be cheaper to deliver in-house rather than contracted out. It's, it is a bit challenging to now say, well, we have to redo the report, we didn't include a bunch of stuff, well, do we have to redo it then for all the garbage and recycle numbers? Because a lot of people relied on that report and making an 8-8 vote to say, let's not bring it in-house, there was a lot of talk about ideology, you're going to make it more expensive, you're just being ideologue. Well, this would bring it cheaper, according to the report, let's bring it in-house, leaf and yard waste, it's cheaper, why are you being such ideologues, I would say? So let's get this report, the idea that we have to add in capital costs, well, obviously, yeah, but as Mr. Delbord said, do you think the private operators are donating these trucks? Oh, we're just, we're just, we'll give you the truck for free, and we'll, we'll find a garage somewhere, and we won't charge you anything for that, it, it is naive to assume that, there is a cost for these things. So let's get the report back, it'll be interesting to see if it's vastly different than what was presented before, which would be rather unfortunate, because it certainly should be, if we relied on that first report in our vote in July, so let's get it back. There are a number of advantages, actually, to the leaf and yard waste aspect of this, if there's ever a strike, it's probably not as onerous to replace as it would be for garbage or recycle, because it's a part-year program, frankly, so that's one way of looking at it, it's also just, and we may be able to have some savings in regard to benefit costs or other costs, because the, these are, these are not permanent employees, these are seasonal employees, like golf courses. And let's remember, I always smile now when I drive by the Canoe Club Golf Course with a big sign saying, now operated by the city of Winnipeg, because in 2013, we were told, boy, it's the unions that's ruining the golf courses, and we're losing a million dollars a year, what a difference a dozen years make, we're now bringing the courses in-house because we think we can make money off of them. So this idea of bringing stuff in-house, not crazy. So let's get the report back, Counsel Reedy's been very supportive of this concept over the years, I thank him for that, we'll see, maybe we can work something out with the union, otherwise, I fear, Madam Speaker, a return voyage will tender out all of garbage and recycling and yard waste, the union will grieve, because the RFP says, you have to offer it to the in-house workers first, to see if they can do it at a comparable cost, we'll have another long, seven-year odyssey of, maybe we should give them bulky, maybe we should give them multifamily, whatever, so let's maybe try and resolve it at the front end here, so we don't engage in another very costly exercise, because I'll tell you, one cost that isn't going to be included in this would be, hey, well, let's buy out the union again, out of their grievance, because that's what happened after the last odyssey in 2016. So we got smarter this time, we're trying to deal with this stuff before we go out to tender, let's see if we can get these numbers in and make a decision that's based on accurate numbers, and if it, if it's cheaper to bring it in-house, well, maybe we can take a look at doing that and get the union to sign off, and we can go and do a much cleaner exercise with the, the garbage and recycling. As Counsel Reedy points out, the recycling's already a bit tricky with the provincial intervention, but we'll see how that plays out. So again, pleased to see you moving forward, let's get the report, and let's have, let's try and have this debate before we go out to tender this time rather than after.
Thank you, any further speakers, Counsel Brawdy?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I've said, I think, quite consistently on the floor of this council here, Winnipeggers want quality services, and I don't think for the most part that they're that concerned whether or not the person delivering it works for the city of Winnipeg directly, through a contractor, they just want their yard waste picked up, they want their garbage picked up, they want their toilets to flush when they flush the toilet. This is an area where I'd be surprised if a highly unionized environment can deal with the variability in particular, when it comes to the volume of, of yard waste. Current contractors, GFL, Johnson, whoever's involved right now, I don't even know the intimate details of each contract, they have other yard waste collectors, they can bring on all sorts of crews that they have, after they're done their regular shift, to go and do yard waste at those peak times. Where we're going to find additional city employees during those extreme peaks at the end of the season in particular, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that there's going to be yard waste sitting for days and weeks on end, getting stuck under snow and ice, because we don't have the resources to scale up for those huge volumes at the end of season. If QP and others want to find a way to make this work, they can find a way to, you know, make overtime shifts very affordable for the taxpayers of Winnipeg, let's talk, but I am skeptical, so regardless, no harm letting the public service come back and tell us what they think they can do, but again, it's all about providing quality services to Winnipeg at the end, Winnipeg is at the end of the day for me.
Thank you, any further speakers? Seeing none, Counsel Reedy to close.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thanks, my both colleagues, for speaking to this issue. Madam Speaker, I'm going, well, I found this difficult, this one, with the new waste management fee, and I spent a couple hours with Counsel Schreier on the stoop, talking about the new waste management fee, which he wasn't aware was coming down the pipe, and it was coming up, and so I explained to him, Madam Speaker, why we really had to go to a waste management fee, a solid waste management fee, and in describing that, and I told him, well, so it's, it's, it's fairly high, it's a new $254 for, like, regular residential collection, what is it, about $124 a year for multifamily, and, anyway, there is some cost that will be not in here a little bit, three years into, fourth year into the future of the new waste management fee, and so Counsel Mays, having this portfolio, did notice the report that indicated that the city of Winnipeg could do it cheaper, they were looking at numbers, Madam Speaker. One, a couple things I should mention, though, the public service already has indicated that there's an administration cost, Madam Speaker, to oversee contracts and, and a number of that, and that's allocated to the cost of, of private sector contracts. Now, I'm going to point something out, and it can be allocated a portion for the yard waste portion, because the, those costs were for all the different kinds of collection the private sector is doing right now. And, yeah, we'd have to allocate that, but I'll bring up this point, Madam Speaker, just to be clear, administration is overseeing, it's talking about, you know, there, there has to be a supervisor, whatever, look over and make sure the work is, is a quality service, and for the most part, city services are delivered by our public service right now, are quite good quality. In, in the inner city, though, I'll just let people know, it's not so much about, although they want their garbage cleaned up, it's not so much about cleaning, getting a quality service, it's how much is it going to cost me? Because I don't have the money. I get calls from seniors still, I'm getting emails still, a former person who used to take care of the cameras here in the council chamber has sent me an email, and his income is quite low, and he's having to pay this new fee, and he's struggling to, you know, make a living, so, or, to pay his bills. So just to be clear, we also have, I forgot this, I went away from this, part of the administration are, there are a number of workers with solid waste that go out to inspect, inspect garbage situations. Now, those, those people have been working for the city for a long time, some of them, well, maybe the last one retired at the luncheon today, I don't know, but there's been a lot of people who are very familiar and know how to deal with garbage situations, they work for us, and they monitor and watch things going. Do we actually have to hire new supervisors, or are these people capable? I think they're quite capable, Madam Speaker, and they're already on the payroll. and they're already on the payroll. It's these kind of things I want to see in a report that comes back. And so I don't think I want to go on too much longer. But there's even the debate about, well, can you use the public works, trucks that are used? And they're collecting, you know, park waste. These trucks are capable, but they say they fully need them. But, you know, I know that parks and open spaces, when there's a major garbage dump or whatever, we're hiring a private truck, private, small company, to come in, and it's $600 an hour. $600 an hour, Madam Speaker. Because he's got the driver and a couple of workers to collect it and put it in their truck. So what I'm saying is, well, why can't solid waste bring even that program into it? We heard that, well, no, we can't consolidate solid waste. There's still another report coming, Madam Speaker. But I'll just end by saying, we have to find a way to lower the waste management fee because, like Jason Schreier stood for, like the mayor stands for today and everybody, we know there's an affordability problem, and we want to make it all work, quality service for the lowest cost. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the question. Item five, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. We'll now have the next committee, Standing Policy Committee on Community Services. There's no report today. No motions. But I think there are bylaws on the previous committee, Mr. Clerk. Okay, let's go back to that for a moment. Yeah. The bylaw, Council Reedy on that committee.
Yes. Does the clerk have to say it first, or am I? Okay. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move first reading of bylaw number 39, 2025, a first time.
All in favor? Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 39 of 2025.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that bylaw number 39, 2025, be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 39 of 2025.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to suspend the rule and move third reading of bylaw 39, 2025, and be passed and ordered to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Any questions under this committee today? Okay, next is the Standing Policy Committee on Community Services. Our chair, Council Santos, had to depart early. There's no reports today and no motions. Question period will go to the mayor today. Any questions? Council Gilroy?
I was just wondering if the mayor has any stories to share about Council Schreier helping out community services.
Thank you. We'll be here for a long time with that.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, I want to thank the council for a question. This did come to me through social media. So I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'm going to share it anyways. And we started our day appropriately honoring Council Jason Schreier. I think it's, as we conclude, we should do the same. So this is from a social media platform. It was a thread. The heading was Winnipeg City Councilor Jason Schreier Has Died. I used to be neighbors with him, and I can attest that he was a pleasant, likable guy. I actually have a pretty funny story about how I came to realize he was also my city councillor a couple of years after we met, lol. I used to take my kids to the neighborhood park, and on a couple of occasions, I'd see him there throwing a frisbee around with his boys. One time I was there, pushing my kids on the swings, and I see him having this conversation with an older lady who has this rather intense expression on her face as she's speaking with him. They're quite close by, and I'm able to overhear that she's fired up because this strip of grass behind the swings never gets mowed because the people that mow the grass drive those big ride-on mowers that can't fit in there. Jason assures the lady he will personally ensure the matter is taken care of. We can picture the next part. A few minutes later, he comes back with his personal lawnmower and mows the strip of grass behind it himself, lol. And yes, that strip of grass stayed tidy the rest of the summer. I talked to him about it after. How things like this sometimes get missed when running a huge bureaucracy like the city, which was when he mentioned he was happy to help a fellow constituent and a neighbor, at which point it clicked for me that he wasn't just my neighbor. Ha ha. I'm sure that I'm not the only person who will have a nice memory of him to look back on right now. And I really hope his family is eventually able to find comfort in their memories of him as time goes on. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Very, very nice. We're going to go to the next committee just to close off shortly. It's the Governance Committee of Council. Council Allard, you'll move the bylaws on my behalf, please.
On behalf of Council Sharma, I move that the following bylaws be read a first time. Bylaw number 41, 2025. Bylaw 40, bylaw number 42, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. And Council Mayes noted in opposition. One bylaw or two, Council Mayes? It was 41. Okay, 41 noted in opposition. Council Allard?
I think the clerk needs to read the bylaws.
Bylaw number 41 of 2025 and bylaw number 42 of 2025.
I move that bylaws numbered 41, 2025, and 42, 2025 be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaws numbered 41 of 2025 and 42 of 2025.
And then I move that the rule be suspended, and bylaws numbered 41, 2025, and 42, 2025